I just called the recess in order to get these council rules in front of us. So we now back out of recess. Mr. President, we out of recess. Davina had provided me a copy of the council rules. She running off some other copies. I'm gonna first turn to the, uh, council rules. And so for the first council rule that I'm gonna turn to. Any twenty-five point five. Order, orders, we got a meeting here. If these serious matters, are we listening to the meeting? I'm at twenty-five point five, council rule. Any two members have the right to appeal the presiding officer's decision on a point of order. This requires one member making or taking the appeal and another seconding or supporting it. A lack of support means the motion failed. If the motion is supported, the council body votes to decide the question. Members has no right to question the decision or ruling of the presiding officer unless appealed. Now, we gonna get to the part that we took a recess for. It's gonna tell you somewhere how an appeal works. Anybody who find it first.
So you don't have, you didn't, you didn't find it?
No, I haven't found what I found part of it, not the other part. Ms. Fields, what you looking at?
Roberts Rules, page three ninety-four, three ninety-five.
Okay, we first on the, we on first on the council rule. We gonna peruse them 'cause they take precedent over Roberts' rules.
There's nothing in council rules that addresses that, but there is something in Worthy's words.
Okay, well, whatever it is, state it. But I'm just telling you what I'm doing.
Shall I state it now?
You can state it.
Page three ninety-four and three ninety-five, Roberts Rules, eleventh edition. Rule against the chair.
Hold up, hold up. Three ninety-four.
And three ninety-five. If you go down to number twenty-five.
Okay, well, Ms. Fields, I asked for the council rules first. So I'll note the page and we can put a pin in it and come back to it, but I'm gonna first look at council rules, three ninety-four and three ninety-five. Is that what you said?
Point of information, could you explain to me what you're looking for in council rules?
I will, but let me get to the page. If you don't know and you citing pages, then you should ask what for.
This is.
I'm on to you, Ms. Fields. You asked me a question. You say, what is we looking for? I'm gonna tell you what we recessed for. You appealed when I stated that when there's an appeal from the ruling of the chair, the chair states that first. I say, I wasn't clear on Ms. Galloway's appeal, so I went to her. You saying and, and did a point of order like I'm talking prematurely. So what you gonna be looking for is the language in the rules of council or in the parliamentary procedure book that tells you what happens when an appeal is made. I'm alleging that the chair states something and makes a point and you thinking you do before I do, in this case. So when you find that after an appeal has been.
Point of information.
You got the flow, what's your just talk?
Is the chair aware that he never stated what rule Ms. Galloway broke? Therefore, any right to speak on.
We ain't at that point yet. You proceeding way too soon. Right now, we on your point of order.
That's at the heart of the matter.
We recessed, no, we recessed on your point of order. So we gonna clear that up. We gonna go step by step. You not finna confuse this one. You said and you believed and you did a point of order that you believe that the chair had, don't state what the appeal is. I said, I wasn't sure and I deferred to Ms. Galloway to clear it up, then I stated and proceed with the appeal. You got upset 'cause I was doing that and you did a point of order. I told you in the point of order that, um, what should happen when an appeal is made. At that point, you appealed my ruling and that's where we at. So we gonna stick with it and I'm gonna prove to you what happens when an appeal is made. That's where we at. Don't get into Ms. Galloway, that'll be later. You clouded the issue with this and I'm finna prove you wrong. And we gonna first peruse the council rules, then we'll go to Roberts' rules. Now, you done said something about Roberts' rules as we still first peruse the council rules, 'cause they take precedent. And if this the type of meeting y'all wanna have to prove that are alleged that I don't know what I'm doing as a chair, you gonna find yourself bumping your head more than
I believe I found what you're looking for, Mr. Mays.
Well, right now, I'm on coun, is it in council rules?
It's in Roberts' rules.
Okay, so we'll get to Roberts' rules after council rules. Hold your thoughts. What's your point of information, Ms. Galloway?
We were in a recess to find it and now we.
We were in a recess so Davina could bring these rules for all of us since we wanna play the rule game. That's what the purpose of the recess was. Now we got them, we out of recess, use them as much exists. And then we'll go from these to Roberts' rules. These, you have to be looked at first. And that's what I'm doing as the chair. And I would suggest that others should.
Point of information.
What's your point, Ms. Galloway?
Would it take away from those that are looking at the council rules if Roberts' rules was read in the process?
Um, no, it wouldn't take away, but I try to do one thing at a time and I'm chairing this meeting. So you can look at them in the process and you can verbally say them when I recognize. But y'all wanna play the rule game with this chair? I'm gonna play it to the hilt right with y'all. It's a waste of time, but I'm gonna play it and we gonna play it right. Okay, so what I read in Roberts' rules earlier about an appeal, I don't, that's about the only language that I see. So if I don't see any other language on an appeal from the ruling of the chair, then that would take us to Roberts' rules. So I have one or two more pages to look at. So I see twenty-five point five deals with an appeal. Okay, now, Ms. Fields, according to what you were saying, Ms. Fields, you say you found the part that I'm looking for. Do you have a number or page in Roberts' rules? Because I think, I think that I have looked at the council rules. What are you looking at?
Well, I flipped that page over. I have page three ninety-four I'd like to read while other people are still looking for the answer to your question. And page three ninety-four, rule against the chair's participation in debate. If the presiding officer is a member of the society, he has, as an individual, the same rights in debate as any other member. But the impartiality required of the chair in an assembly precludes his exercising these rights while he is presiding. Normally, especially in large body, he should have nothing to say on the merits of pending questions. On certain occasions, which should be extremely rare, the presiding officer may believe that a crucial factor relating to such a question has been overlooked and that his obligation as a member to call attention to the point outweighs his duty to preside at that time. To participate in debate, he must relinquish the chair and in such a case, he should turn the chair.
Ms. Fields, that is not the right part for an appeal for the ruling of the chair. So I hear you reading it, it might go to Ms. Galloway's appeal, but for yours, that's not what we're looking for. If we wanna continue to peruse Roberts' rules, I'll help you with that in just a second. That's Ms., that's not, that's not what we looking for. And, and, being all polite, you reading something wrong. So let's, I'm gonna read the part that deals with an appeal from a chair. You talking about a regular motion in a debate. That ain't what this recess happened, that you created the confusion with your point of order that's being ruled on. So you can smile and laugh, but you're dead wrong. Now we gonna look for the appeal from the ruling of the chair and the order in which that debates proceed.
Oh, I, I did find it, it's on the next page. Would you like me to read this, Mr. Mays?
What page is it on?
Three eighty.
Three eighty.
In the case of.
I, I didn't ask you to read it. 'Cause you read one and to the record, that was misguided. Let me look at it and if you choose to read it at its own point, then I'll recognize you to read it. So let's all turn to page three eighty and see how much time we done wasted.
We wasted a lot.
A lot. So on page three eighty. Okay, so here we go. You wanna read it?
I withdraw my appeal.
I withdraw my appeal.
Well, fine, but, so all appeals is withdrawn, so this is what the chair gonna do. On page three eighty of Roberts' rules, it say, in the case of an appeal or a point of order that the chair has submitted to a vote, that is debatable. The chair is entitled to speak once in preference to any member seeking the floor and a second time at the close of the debate. Now, that's kinda raggedy. It ain't quite on point, but it contradicts the other part that Ms. Fields read on three ninety-four. Ms. Fields is mixing.
Point of information.
What's your point of information, Ms. Fields?
Are you aware that I found that section for you to read? I was prepared to read it, but you wanted to read it and it does not.
Ms. Fields, your point is, your point is where?
It does not contradict, it does not contradict.
What's your point of order? That's not a point of order, that's debating the context of how an appeal works. So you out of order again. And I deny your point of order. And I'm trying to proceed because I don't need.
Mr. Mays, I appeal your point of order.
As an appeal of a ruling or something, of a point of order or something on the floor, is there a second? Ms. Worthing has seconded. Now she says she appealed a point of order. I denied her point. And the point that I denied was that she had found the wrong part, still ain't quite on point, but it'll continually change. Ms. Fields, what's your appeal and convince everybody that you should read it?
My appeal is, number one, when you rule somebody on a point of order, you have to state what rule has been broken. You cannot state what rule has been broken. You never can state what rule has been broken. You just interrupt people with incorrect and illegal points of order.
Ms. Fields, did you clearly state what your point of order was? I didn't hear it. Ms. Worthing, if you heard it, then you clear it up in my mind what was a point of order. 'Cause you seconded.
No, you.
Say whatever you wanna say, you got the flow.
She appealed your point of order, but in those rules, which I don't have my copy, uh, it states that point of orders should only be used, uh, when there's, in extreme cases, little things.
Breach of the rules.
Yeah, a breach of the rules and, uh, little things.
Ms. Fields, she's got the floor, you kinda out of order.
Little things like you don't like what someone is saying is not.
Point of information, was hers little or big? She did the point of order. Was it little or big?
Well, there's no rule that she needed to break.
You seconded, was it little or big?
There was no rule that she broke, so it was nothing.
You said, let me let you finish. You done? You said that a point of order should be used on big things, not little things. She used a point of order in order to tell me what I was reading as it relates to the chair discussion and appeal. And I told her her first reading and page was wrong. Her second reading was more on point and she said point of order. I denied her point of order. You appealed it. She didn't state no point of order. She was trying to debate with me whether or not this that she read was on point. So now, is it any more discussion on Ms. Fields' appeal? Ms. Worthing, you don't need no point, you got the flow. You seconded it.
You said point of order and she appealed it.
No, she did point of order. And I denied her point of order, so you might better pay close attention as you second her appeal.
I seconded her appeal?
Right. We got that, we know you the only one sending that to take it, don't you, Ms. Fields?
I withdraw my appeal on the basis that the chair has no idea what he's doing.
You can withdraw it on any basis you want, but we not gonna let you sit here and make personal attacks. We not gonna let, sit here and let you disrupt this meeting, you and Ms. Worthing. Now, I'm gonna give you one warning again and I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you, under the laws of the city, and I'll read them verbatim, hold on, Ms. Galloway, 'cause I'm finna correct this, and then we gonna start appealing and voting to see if we can get you out this room. So I'm finna read the law of what this order is. And once I read it, I done gave y'all warnings. Y'all can try your best to make me be a bad chair, but it ain't gonna happen under my watch. This game has been played every meeting primarily with you and Worthing and whatever other helpers. And so we gonna stop and address it politely. Ms. Worthing, you seconded an appeal because I denied her point of order and said I denied it.
Point of information.
'Cause it wasn't a point. What's your point of information?
Um, is it, is it okay to move on when a, when an appeal has been withdrawn?
It is, but it's also okay for me in this meeting to clear some stuff up before I move on. And that's exactly what I'm gonna do, 'cause this is happening repeatedly. It's turning into a game. And so before I move on, I want members who don't understand what happened, like Ms. Worthing, to understand. I want you and everybody else to understand and everybody watching. We don't come in these meetings for these appeals and second and the withdraw and do, go through with it. Go through with it. When we spend this much time learning a rule that we already know, I know the chair get to state what's stated in an appeal.
Point of information.
What's your point?
Council Mays, with all of the appeals being withdrawn, is it appropriate for me to get the floor back to continue the work of the city?
When I get, acknowledge you. But it's also appropriate for me when she do editorials about, I don't know what's going on, and she withdraw it. It's appropriate for me to set the record straight, 'cause I'm chairing this meeting. So you can, you can appeal and withdraw it politely, but when you withdraw it with a tag on it that I don't know what's going on, I'm gonna prove I know what's going on. In my opinion, she withdrew it because she found out that in an appeal, what a chair can do and say. Now, we ain't got to yours yet. But that's the game she playing. She finding out she wrong and then she wanna withdraw it before we discuss the details out the book and then put a nasty tag on it, the chair don't know what's going on. I know what the hell's going on. It's her and her playing a game with this chair. And I'm asking you, Griggs, Garrett, Jerry Winfrey, Connor, and Maurice Davis not to be a part of it, because it's a dumb-boned waste of time, constantly. And it's not, and it's got to stop. I think before all of those appeals, you were talking to Ms. Steel and Ms. Steel yielded to Angela as it relates to the concern pastors lawsuit. And then I chimed in and said if we need an executive session, because some of the things which you alluded to were executive session material. I remember them well, I was here, I was in the executive session. So if you wanna continue with the floor, I'm gonna ask that we don't discuss particulars of things that's executive session discussion. And I will chime in to try to keep that off of that. And that's what happened before. Proceed, Ms. Galloway.
Although I appreciate you summarizing that, that wasn't the last piece that we were on.
That's what I remember.
But I got, right, but I was asking questions about how much was left of the concerned pastors money. I have since then had all of my questions answered during recess. And so with that, I will call for the question on the resolution of all of the ones to move to council.
There's been a motion to call for the question on the resolutions going to council. President Winfrey?
Second the motion.
So it's been moved and seconded. All in favor of the call of the questions signify by saying aye or raising your hand?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? So all of those resolutions, Janil, except for the one we separated, has been now moved to council. Ms. Galloway?
I would like to.
Hold up, hold up. We did the call for the question.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Now I must, thank you, Janil. Now I must ask all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye or raise your hand?
Aye.
All opposed? So the vote would be one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine council members present. Any abstentions? The vote would be eight yes and one no to move these to council. Ms. Galloway, you had a sep, was that your separation?
Yeah.
Okay, you got a separation. What's the number on it?
One eight zero four eight one.
One eight zero four eight two?
Wait, wait, no, 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 no. One eight zero four. I got, oh, no, 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 no. One eight zero four nine six.
Yeah, that's what you separated. One eight zero four nine six. Ms. Galloway, proceed.
I would, um, I would like to make a motion to postpone this to the next finance committee.
Okay, a motion to postpone the finance committee, one eight zero four nine six has been made. Mr. Griggs?
I'll second.
And so it's been moved and seconded. It moved by Ms. Galloway, seconded by Mr. Griggs. Ms. Galloway, you have discussion on the motion to postpone to next finance committee, meaning that's your motion.
Yes. Um, and the reason why is, um, this contract that breaks down into, um, well, we see this twenty, twenty-seven, eight a month, but it breaks down to three hundred and thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and forty-four dollars a year. And I would like.
Could you repeat that again?
Um, well, the contract is, over a five-year period, is one point six six eight seven two zero, so one million, six sixty-eight, seven hundred and twenty dollars over a five-year period, 'cause that was what.
Ms. Galloway, based upon what you were saying earlier, let me chime in a little bit. How many people is this five-year contract for?
That, that was my question, how many people define staff? No, it says two people resign, but it says laboratory staff will be paid, but it doesn't say, at least in, when the reading of it, how many.
Okay, proceed or ask them questions, 'cause they trying to chime in, but if, you can proceed. If you, you need to have question answered first before you proceed, you not gonna lose the flow.
No, I, I, they can answer.
Okay, how many people is that? Rob, you know, this contract for five years, Ms. Galloway?
Yeah, it's four, it's four people, so it's providing the operator in charge, lab supervisor, two lab techs.
Ms. Galloway, is it something else you need to know about this contract? Mr. Benzick, we had separated this, Ms. Galloway and others might have questions. Ms. Winfrey is waiting, but Ms. Galloway got the flow.
Um, Rob, one of the questions that I had is you're saying that it covers four people. Now, we lost two, but we're, we're getting four. So why are we, why, why are we paying for four people?
So, well, so we actually lost, uh, lab supervisor, two lab techs, and a plant supervisor.
Okay, just so you know, Rob, it says two city laboratory staff employees resigned last August. That's what's within the resolution. And when the resolution first came before us, it was a thirty day, and then it was extended. And so that's been over a year. And so now we're going into another five years, which means that in totality, we will have paid this company for over six years. Right? And so, um, for me, I wanted to know why it said two and how many, it doesn't say the point that you're saying, so thank you for that. But also, what are the salary of the people that were filling those positions and how does it correlate with what we're spending?
Okay, so the first question I wanna talk about is why we're going with a five-year contract. So there's two reasons. One is there's a savings involved, um, F and D with a longer contract will give us a cheaper price. The other probably.
How much cheaper?
Uh, approximately thirty thousand dollars a year.
Okay, you can show it.
Yeah, so the other, the other probably more important issue is, um, the state of Michigan wants to issue us an administrative consent order regarding the, to quote them, the lack of robustness of the contract that we have with them. So in other words, they want a longer contract, um, in place to ensure that, uh, we have these services here, um, not just a thirty-day warranty.
Now, and Rob, does this have, it, it seems like, and I, I can only go by what you've been removing, it seems like there was something in you where, I don't know if it was the MBEQ or the ETA stating that the actions that we were taking were not in line with where they thought we were? Does this have to do with that? Do you know what I'm talking about? I can pull it up though.
Why do you pull it up?
You know what, you know what I'm talking about?
I, I'm not sure exactly what you're referring to, but I, I do know that they've been pretty adamant with us about wanting to pay a longer-term contract. Um, we have attempted to recruit people, we are, we are not receiving, nobody's coming here wanting to go through a job.
But we've ne, I've never seen salaries, 'cause it seems like you were saying, okay, so, so, now, now, Rob, I'd like for the salary, I don't wanna write me that, like, when, for me, when these come before me, I, I'd like to have some of those things in hand. Again, in the resolution, it says two people. Now, you brought information saying that it's actually more people that you lost in your department.
So I have a spreadsheet here, but I wanna correct, I wanna check the correctness of the numbers.
So then it wouldn't be good for you to give it to me?
Well, no, I'm pretty accurate on the wages. I'm pretty accurate that the wages are.
Okay.
I think these numbers are close, but I wanna make sure it's the right, I'm gonna go on record with them, but the, the actual numbers that we pay, um, the plant supervisor, lab supervisor, lab techs are accurate.
I was just about to say, I, I could, I could make a substitute motion and postpone it to special affairs, but that's next?
We don't need a special, we have.
Oh, we do, we do, I remember that, yeah. So, okay.
This is the time to get stuff cleared up.
I'll still ask some questions, I may not support it, but I'll still have my questions.
It's the Winfrey.
Yeah, and, and I can understand, but, but I think a question that, that, uh, your concerns are valid, but I think a question that I, I thought you were going this way is that, is there a way that we, that we would be, would be advantageous for us to hire people with those qualifications? And how would we come out in five years if we can hire those, those four, those four, uh, employees? As city employees, over a five-year period, how would we be?
So, Mr. Winfrey, oh, you asking the question of would we be better off contracting out or hiring employees? Mr. Benzick?
So the num, the numbers I have in front of me, which I wanna check the correctness and accuracy of the first, actually show the savings we have, F and D versus most having the four positions filled to hire employees.
And then to get through you.
And that's why I did that, Mr. Winfrey.
Because now, because when we're talking about, uh, regular employees, we're talking more than just about salaries, we're talking about is it cost as well?
Yes, sir. So, so we have direct fringes, indirect fringes, we have, if they're defined, benefit pensioners, you have merge contribution, all those things go into the total cost.
And, and if this passes, if this postponement passes, what you may want to do is provide it up to us as well, you know, this information that you're asking about, which, what would be provided up to us over a five-year period?
Mr. Griggs?
I've got a question from Mr. Benzick. This five-year contract, in case we find four plant employees to work there, can this contract be broken?
Yes.
Okay, that's all.
Yeah, there was a, uh, just so you know, not to interrupt you, but there was a clause that the state really wanted us to put in there, is it a twenty days? Hundred and twenty days to break it, so it's, um, it's completely, we can get. But part of what F and D does is going to do with this five-year contract is hopefully develop, you know, some of our own people to kinda take over, you know, that's part of what they're, they're doing. It's just, I think it's a, it's a, it's the only path that we have to go down to kind of, this is part of our recovery from the water crisis, there's not a lot of certified operators or lab hands or equipment for, you know, in this situation.
Mr. Garrett, I mean, did I, did you finish, Mr. Griggs?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Uh, to the chair.
To the chair, uh, Mr. Benzick, is this the Doris Stewart lab?
What is, what is the question, Mr. Garrett?
Is this the Doris Stewart lab?
Is this the Doris and Stewart lab?
This is our drinking water lab, so we, we do have two labs at the, um, at the city of Plant, we have wastewater lab that's on a beach and engine, and we have our drinking water lab over on Port State.
Okay.
This is referring to the-
Ms. Galloway, I wanted to recognize you and I will, but let me explain something about council rules. Ms. Fields is reading rules by the chair remaining silent. Our council rules say everybody get a chance to speak once, and that's our council rules, they supersede Robert's rules. So, regardless of the size of the assembly or whatever she reading about, Robert's rules trying to silence this chair, I call on people, and in this meeting, according to these rules, I don't have to remain silent. That's something to do with Robert's rules that ain't addressed in our rules. Um, for a second time on this motion, go ahead, Ms. Galloway.
And I, and I'll, and I'll agree with you, I don't think the chair should be silent, but Councilman Mays, I want, I'm, I'm asking you as your colleague, for you to exercise the same, um, consistency when I chair and others chair that you exercise when you're chairing. Cause, cause that's not always explained, I'm just saying, okay?
We on a motion, now after new business, if you want to, we can, but you can proceed with that till the cows come home, but I know I'm, I'm gonna open it and keep it open. Ms. Galloway, hold up.
Mr. Benzick?
Ms. Galloway, hold up.
I'm sorry, Mr. Benzick.
Hold up, hold up.
See, why do you get to take this, go through that?
Because, because, I'm telling you, you got a legitimate conversation, but let's do it after this motion. Proceed.
So, through you to Mr. Benzick. Mr. Benzick, if you don't mind, before your current position, what position do you hold in the city? And is the salaries comparable to what your salary was before you were the DPW director?
Hold up, Mr. Benzick.
I think that's the first-
Ms. Ms. Galloway, when you say through you to Mr. Benzick, it ain't automatic. And so, I'm gonna say proceed, Mr. Benzick, but that's the reason for the through you, because that mean I can deal with it. So, in this case, proceed, but I don't want y'all to get in the habit of just send through you and having people address. Go ahead, Mr. Benzick.
It gets comparable, actually, this wage, um, appears to be a little bit higher. I was, uh, you have a water distribution, uh, steward, maybe supervisor.
And so, what, what, can you mind telling me the salaries, cause-
Yeah, I, I have no idea.
Yeah, go ahead, I'm gonna write them down.
So, water plant supervisor, uh, we have listed as eight million, five zero eight.
Does that include fringes?
That's not, that's just the salary, that's just the, uh, end of salary.
Okay.
Um, the lab supervisor, sixty-two thousand, sixty-nine dollars.
And how many of those? How many of each of these positions?
Yeah, just one of each of them.
One of each, okay.
And you'll have two of us, you'll have that, forty-six thousand, two oh five, four oh six.
I guess my concern also, and, and I'm, I'm gonna end this, but, Rob, your one of, your, your qualifications place you in a DPW director status, and you weren't making those salaries. So, what do these people, the salaries that you're bringing before us, what qualifications do they have more than our own DPW director?
So, I am, I am a, I have a F-four license for, for water operations, um, a plant supervisor or operator in charge for our current water plant. A long-term deal with Cleveland, to be a D-one licensed operator.
And that's higher than your F-four?
Um, well, it's different. So, a D license is a limited treatment, uh, drinking water treatment license. An F-series, uh, drinking water treatment license is a full-blown filtration license that allows you to, to run a full-blown, uh, water plant.
And that's the, the, the one at the eighty-one thousand? And so, the, the ones at the sixty-two and forty-six, do they have to ha- hold the same high?
No, it, it would be very typical if they would have the lower, uh, level license, so they start at, uh, D-four, D-three, D-three, D-one.
Okay.
Um, so, it'd be typical if they would have maybe an entry-level license. But the lab supervisor is very proficient, he can act three ninety-nine, lab certification, standard practices in the lab, of which, I'm not an expert, I know a little bit about it, but I'm not-
And the only concern that I'm gonna raise, and, and I'll support it, we got the hundred, but I'm concerned, Rob, that we have no exit strategy for this-
Ms. Galloway, it's a motion on the floor. You spoke once, this is your second on the same motion, in five minutes is the limit. Proceed.
So, have you, have you, have you been timing, Councilman Mays?
I am, proceed.
Councilman Mays?
I'm telling you, this is your second round.
Let's be the same, okay.
Proceed, I do treat people the same, I said proceed.
My concern, thank you, Councilman Mays, my concern is, Rob, when we did it thirty days, and now, we're a year and a half out, I'm concerned that there might be a sense of complacency in the fact that we enter into a long-term contract, and we can't find the people that you're saying these four people are going to train the rest to take over. Who are they gonna train if we don't even have the people for them to pass the mantle to? And so, I, I'm, I'm hoping what is gonna be our follow-up to make sure that we're still trying to seek out those that are really gonna take this place, or are we gonna find ourselves in another five years and these positions aren't, um, done? And so, with that, I'm going to withdraw my motion to postpone, cause I don't wanna hold this back. But I am, for the record, going to be on, I'm, I'm, I'm just saying, to make sure that, because if you have anybody in a position and you have no access to it, you're gonna be in trouble.
But I think your time is up.
Did you, is it on timer?
You, you, you can move to suspend the rules, and I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules.
I withdraw my motion to postpone.
Mr. Garrett?
I'm making a motion that we send one eight zero four nine six with the agreement, uh, that we just discussed in council.
It's been a motion made to send, what, one eight zero four nine six?
Oh, no, point of information.
What's your point of information?
We need to do an amend, um, and, and we need to amend it to correct-
Well, right now, right now, I hear your point of information, there's a motion on the floor that's been made, um, Mr. Garrett, um, you made a motion, correct?
Can I make that motion with the amendment that DPW-
Okay, well-
It puts it in there with the amendment.
Let's, let's, why don't you do it this way, withdraw your motion?
Withdraw my motion.
Okay, now, if you wanna make a new motion, that would be better for me.
I want to make a motion to send one eight zero four nine six-
No, Mr. Garrett, it's an amended motion. It's an amended, it's a point one. Mr. Garrett?
All right.
You got the floor.
I wanna make a motion to amend one eight zero four nine six with the account number of five nine one dash five four five point two zero zero dash eight zero one point zero zero point- And, and what was the other one?
Operator in charge duties.
And, and the operator in charge duties.
Okay, so, Mr., let me, before I get that second, let's make sure this motion is clear. So, the resolution num- I mean, the account number would be amended as stated in this, well, this, this passed out when got four, five, five, two, zero, dash. So, okay, so, the amendment for the change in the account number is in like the third paragraph, and that's where he's making the motion to amend. And then, the second part of the amendment, Mr. Garrett, was what?
And the, and, and operator in charge duties.
And Ms., 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 um, Wheeler, is the operation part of in this resolution?
Yes, it's in the, uh, second paragraph.
The second paragraph, so those were the amendments that's been discussed, the account number. And so, this resolution that's been passed out, um, Mr. Garrett, so, I don't know if it would be in the body of your motion, but the resolution would now be one eight zero four nine six point one. So, at the top of this resolution that was passed out, it'll be labeled four nine six, and it'll be labeled one eight zero four nine six point one. So, there's a motion on the floor to do what with one eight zero four nine six point one, Mr. Garrett? Move it to council?
We have amended it.
Or to amend it?
Amended.
So, we amended, it's a motion to amend one eight zero four nine six to this one eight zero four nine six point one with those amendments. Mr. President?
I support the motion.
So, it's been moved and properly seconded, is there any discussion on this, um, motion to amend? Hearing no discussion on the motion to amend, um, Janelle, Ms. Brown, y'all see everything in the contents of it. Ms., uh, Wheeler, everything seems straight to you?
Yes, that's true.
Okay, if there's no further discussion, all in favor of amending this resolution as stated for the record signify by saying aye or raise your hand?
Aye.
All opposed, any abstentions? Um, the vote would be nine yes, zero no. I would like to entertain a motion to, uh, Mr. Garrett?
I'd like to motion that we send one eight zero four nine six point one to council?
Mr. President?
I support the motion.
So, it's been moved and properly seconded, it's in one eight zero four nine six point one, the amended resolution to council, any further discussion on that? Ms. Galloway?
Yeah, uh, Mr. Benzick, I just, um-
Uh, Ms. Galloway?
Through the chair to Mr. Benzick, if that's okay?
Okay, what's your, proceed, what's your question?
I have to tell you my question?
I mean, you just talking, you saying through me, but you talking, I'm trying to hear it too.
Well, my question is, um, what do we have showing that it's four people? Because in looking at the previous one, it says provide supervisory staff and an operator in charge of the water plant for twenty-three, four oh six. I think this is the one that was before us, before. And then, provide a D-one Michigan municipal certification for the city of Plant for six thousand, six ninety-two a month.
So, what can you, can you repeat that again? What is you asking?
Well, in the previous contract, it had for two staff people, and now, you're saying that it's for four. So, what do we have in documentation through you, through the chair, to Mr. Benzick, that these dollars now that once covered two people now covers four?
Mr. Benzick, you understanding the question?
Yes.
Can you answer it?
Yes, so, it's through you, Ms. Chair, I can- Um, so, we had, actually, I think we had two contracts before, two agreements, we had one for an operator in charge, and then, one for lab services, they happened at different intervals. So, we had, the agreement before was for lab services. Our agreement now, I think, specifies that we have the lab services and the operator in charge also.
But where, where is the clarification that, that there's four people, like?
I believe it's in the agreement, the, the new agreement, the new contract.
Is the contract attached to, to our package?
Do we have the contract?
No, I don't think it's in there, but we, uh, how, uh, who was talking about people?
Oh, before the presentation?
Yeah, perfect, thank you, I appreciate it.
So, we should have a copy of the contract prior to the council meeting and vote? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes.
Okay, maybe we can get it before we adjourn, if that's activity.
I've already made a request for that, so I'll just-
So, that's moving right now?
Yes.
Any more discussion on one eight zero four nine six point one? I got some questions and communications. This was first moved to postpone, now, it's moved in the council, um, Mr. Benzick? F and B is a, um, management company?
Uh, F and B, they have, they have two, they're actually pleased to abandon working engineering, and they have an operations division. It operates, uh, various, uh, water and wastewater facilities all over the state, and in Denver.
Okay, and so, they coming in, is this filling any of the requirements of the EPA order?
It's filling really all of the requirements of the EPA order, it deals with our, uh, technical managerial, uh, capacity of the water.
And have the EPA, you in touch with them as you try to do this, or who communicates with them? You do?
Yeah, so, the, so, the DEQ, who is really the primacy agency that's over us, uh, per the EPA order, um, they are the ones that are dictating, and we take on this, uh, step we have to.
And so, money, um, agreements, EPA orders, I'm gonna be voting to move this to council, and I'll probably be voting to approve it once it get to council. Any other discussion on this, um, amended proposal? If not, I'm gonna call for the question. Um, Mr. Benzick, I would really like for you to say it, but we in committee meeting, so what is it you'd like to say?
I just wanted to say that, that our goal hasn't been to fulfill these positions in this manner. Our goal is to hire city employees to do this. The problem is, we are not getting the response, we put out a job.
Yeah, I understand, and it could be to pay and whatever, we need to revisit some of that. So, I don't mind meeting in a special meeting revisiting the water, the issues, it's a lot we gotta do, I appreciate it. But right now, all in favor of moving one eight zero four nine six point one to council signify by saying aye and/or raise your hand?
Aye.
All opposed, any abstentions? Janelle, that vote count would be, it looks like eight to zero.
Mr. Chair?
Um, Ms. Galloway, was it something you wanted to say or do?
Yeah, I, I, I didn't, I think.
Oh, um, I, I didn't hear a, a nay, but, um, if, if Ms. Galloway says that she voted no, then the vote count would be seven yes and one no. Um, that's, was that the amendment, or was that the move at the council? We'd have moved it to council. So, now, on the agenda, we would be at, Ms. Fields?
I have three referrals I would like to make.
Ms. Fields, we did a change to the agenda prior to you coming in, you can make those referrals, you will be able to make those referrals. Can you hold on a second?
As long as I can make the referrals during this meeting.
You'll get a chance to make those referrals if I got anything to do with it before this meeting is adjourned. Um, the one eight zero four two oh, the masterpiece schedule, I'm gonna order that postponed to the next, um, finance committee meeting without objections. Um, I would order that postponed, but before I order it, if anybody got anything to say about that special order, one eight zero four two oh? I would order that postponed to the next finance committee meeting without objection. One eight zero four two one, that's dealing with the sergeant's, uh, union's retiree insurance. Ms. Wheeler, can you update us on that?
Um, yeah, I'm just trying to use my, we did have conversations with, um, former stone, I did not wanna talk about it in here, it's a reference to his personal information, but, um, I can certainly do with you and him after or between meetings to give you a different conversation to go.
Okay, I would appreciate if you would let me and/or him know, and so, under those circumstances, I would ask that this stay on until the next finance committee meeting, and then, if we decide it should be dropped, to move, we will. But I'll keep it in front of me in case I ain't happy with the information, or maybe I'm happy and want more. So, we'll circle back to that special order. And I would ask that one eight zero four two one stays on the agenda, um, for the next, um, finance committee meeting, Janelle. And so, that would take us down to a special order plan of action, um, planning and development to discuss the final allocation of the recent action plan. Um, I might let this one be dropped. If anybody need it on here, Ms. Fields, you need this to stay on, or you want it dropped as well, or you have no preference?
One eight zero four four eight?
Yeah.
I have no preference.
Okay, so, discuss the final allocations of the recent action plan, as well as any leftover funds. Uh, I wanna make a referral, because I think the reason I put this on here is that, um, Suzanne was saying, well, I found out they didn't have to come back to us for money, so this ain't gonna be a referral, other than the request that Ms. Wilcox attend the next, um, finance committee meetings. Now, she said some of that stuff has been delegated to somebody else, so I would ask that both of them come, whoever that person was, because I wanna discuss in a timely manner with this council how much, um, money is left over, and where do we plan for it to go. Um, so I'm gonna just ask that this special order one eight zero four four eight stay on as a special order, but in addition to that, I want communications to Ms. Wilcox and/or whoever she deems appropriate to attend the next finance committee meeting to address this. Is it something, Ms. Galloway? I'm on the special order one eight zero four four eight, that was some of the change in the agenda. I was trying to get the resolutions done, run over the hassle brings, let her finish chairing to me, but we got balked out on resolutions and didn't get it passed, so I done scrapped that. I'm sticking with you, it's a got a little crazy, so I'm here now. All of that activity kept me here, and so I'm here. So that's why we had one zero, one eight zero four four eight. Jennifer, yeah, I mean, Janelle, we understand what's happening, it stays on, and we sending communications out to Suzanne, Wilcox, and where. And the primary discussion will be the leftover block grant money and the reallocations thereof. Now, um, we would be, cause we did the, um, change in, uh, the agenda. We can discuss the hearing now, or we can discuss it under new business. Um, I think I wanna discuss it now, because, Ms. Worthing, do you recall that I said you would be able to discuss the hydro back and that type of stuff? And so that's kinda tied in to the money in the hearing flow. And Ms. Brown is here. So, Ms. Worthing, I wanna give you the floor, but under the, Ms. Galloway, go ahead.
So, okay. So, we discussed the special orders, and now...
The hearing was put in on the agenda change as a special order. It can be a special order under, or a new business. So I'm doing it under special order, based on how this been went. That was the agenda change before you and I think, Ms. Fields or whoever got you. So we're doing it in a special order dealing with the hearing. Ms. Brown, uh, Ms. Winfrey, can you allow her to use that seat? Ms. Brown had a contract for hydro back, and a two million dollar contract. In that contract, she had language as it relates to restoration. Copper to copper, they dig, they do exploratory, um, excavation, and if they find copper to copper, there's no lead service line replacement. Goyette had a restoration contract that dealt with service line replacements. And so now we gonna discuss the interpretation of those two contracts. She believes she should get all of the work pretty much, where it ain't no service line change. And Goyette's restoration is when a service line is changed. She's got copies of her contract language, but the reason I'm doing this under the special order as it relates to the details of the hearing, because the flow of money from the cit- state to the city is gonna impact. That's what Ms. Worthing keep talking about, the, um, hydro back, and Ms. Fields, I have others talked about it, you might have too. And so I wanna fit her in there to get this information out, because at the end of this special order, Ms. Fields seemed to not be opposed to a hearing, but she won't heard the chair. That's what I'm getting. We'll get to that as we move closer to this. Ms. Galloway?
So, um, so are we doing this kinda, kinda like a, uh, to get some information for the hearing, or where we're going? And, and the reason why is because with Ms. Brown being here, one of the questions that I have, that I've been looking at, is it seems like when the bid was submitted, there was a bond requirement. And I don't know, Ms. Brown, maybe you can answer, if we do, wait a minute, I just wanna, through the ch- I just wanna say it to you. Um, but I didn't wanna go through, cause I'm, I don't, I'm not asking her a question. But it seems like as part of the proposal, there was a two million dollar bond that had to be secured. And it, it doesn't, if I'm not mistaken, and I'm trying to do the research, it doesn't seem like that bond was secured once the proposal was, um, won, if that makes sense.
I don't know what bond you referring to, you talking about a bond for her company?
Yeah, when each, when each contractor submits a bid, they have to show that they're bonded and that they can secure a certain bond amount.
That's correct, they are bonded.
Yeah, and when you don't secure the bond that you say you were, there's supposed to be some changes according to the ordinance. And so that's, I don't know, I don't know if we're gonna talk about that today, I just wanna make sure that six years...
We can, if need be, but Ms. Worthing, I said I wanted to give her the floor first, based upon how she had been, you know, when I asked her, Ms. Worthing, and then...
Can I, can I say something? What I need to say?
Okay, you okay right now, Ms. Worthing?
I give up the floor, I don't...
Okay, then, go ahead, Mister President.
And I know that this is an important piece, but I, I'm wondering if we should consider recessing, and then doing the legislative operations and grants, because there's a couple of things on each...
If you put a motion on the floor while you got the floor, then your motion is gonna be legitimately recognized. And then if you wanna discuss it and see if it passes, I would entertain that motion.
Okay, then, 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 Mister Chair, I, I, uh, move that we recess finance committee. Do legislative, governmental ops, and then grants, and then come back to, come out of recess.
So it's a motion on the floor to recess finance. Go to legislative, governmental ops, and, um, grants, and then come back to finance. Is there a second? Ms. Worthing? Uh, is there a discussion on this particular motion, Ms. Fields?
I would be willing to do that, but I would like to place my referrals, because referrals get a, especially when we recess, I would like to place my referrals first, and then I would be willing to support that.
Um, any more discussion? Mister Griggs?
Is this supposed to save us time, is that what we want?
Um, let me say this. Um, I can't control who puts a motion on the floor at what time. Ms. Fields, we would entertain your referrals if it, um, I don't know if anybody would object to you making the referrals during the discussion on the motion. I mean, I don't think nobody gonna feel, I'm not gonna say they out of order. But, uh, my position is this. My position is, time is gonna always be a thing. And so based upon the agenda and the amendments and the way this council operate, I hope that this motion don't shortchange what we got going here with Ms. Brown and others. So any motion, I'm gonna entertain it, it's proper, it's been properly seconded, we on discussion. I might vote, hold on, Mister Griggs, you out of order, cause I got the floor. May I get a pardon?
I have the floor.
When did I give it to you?
A while ago. When I asked my question.
Okay, well, look, I have the floor, you out of order, but I'm gonna yield the floor to you, because you really didn't have it. You don't want me to yield it to you?
I have the floor.
Mister Griggs, I'm not gonna yield it to you, I'm gonna continue. Um, so what I was saying was, let's keep that in mind, we got folks waiting here. I might not vote in favor of it, but I'll have a second round of discussion after Mister Griggs. Mister Griggs, if you got the, want the floor, go ahead.
I have my question answered by Mister Winfrey, I'm done.
So what was you trying to get the floor for, that you interrupted me?
I asked a question, Mister Winfrey answered. I said, well, this saves time.
Okay, well, that's cool. Any more discussion on the motion, uh, Ms. Fields?
Since you just stated that you have no problem with me making my referrals during the discussion?
That's correct.
I would like to do so.
So do.
Okay, I have three referrals. First is, per city charter, council is supposed to be getting quarterly reports on all budget amendments that have been passed during the quarter. And I've made the request before, so the secretary may find the earlier request, but we're now ending our third quarter, and we've not received one quarter's report.
So your referral is?
For budget amendments to date, as required by the, uh, city charter.
So I would order that referral without objection, that referral would go to, I guess, finance and/or the mayor's office, city administration. Um, I want that referral to go to the city administrator, the mayor, and finance department. I guess the referral, and you can tell me if I'm saying it wrong, she won't, at the next finance committee meeting, she's making a referral to either have or tell us something about the quarterly reports. Word that, how you want Janelle to send that referral, and I'm gonna order it without...
I would like the re- charter required budget amendment quarterly reports to date.
So that would be ordered without objections, you got another referral?
I have two, would you, I have them in writing to simplify this getting to, because one of them is quite lengthy.
But I wanna hear it.
My question was going to be, would you like to hear these? Okay, so the first one is, it's a request to finance. I've attached the budget resolution for the first two million we received from the state in grant funding. I wanna see the line item details of revenue in and expenditures out on this two million. I also want to see a copy of the invoices paid from this two million. This was prior to the tenure of the current CFO.
Now, what two million are you referring to?
The first two million the state gave us, that is in this budget amendment. Amendment one six oh oh three seven.
Okay, I remember you asking about it, what's the date on that?
Uh, three nine sixteen.
Three nine sixteen, so you gonna provide a copy of that?
With my...
So now what is the referral request?
I want to see the line item details of revenue in and expenditures out on this two million. I also want to see a copy of the invoices paid from this two million.
Okay, so I would, um, order that referral request, uh, without objection, and it can go to finance and/or the city administrator and/or mayor to get the answers and provide the information to the questions on the two million. Ms. Brown?
Uh, I don't recall what she's saying, but why I don't...
The resolution that she has should identify the two million, and then she wanna see... Yeah, I think she gonna provide Janelle with that particular resolution she referring to, but I might be missing some, Ms. Brown. What do she need to say or do?
Okay, I'll read it, it's, "The city of Flint has received preliminary notice of the state of Michigan Department of Treasury's intent to award a financially distressed cities, villages, and townships grant to the city of Flint in the amount of two million towards reimbursement of expenditures required for the reconnection to and purchase of treated water from the Detroit Water and Sewer Department."
So would that resolution help?
I'm not through.
Okay, but no, we don't need to hear it all, if we gonna...
You need to hear the last...
No, we gonna wait for the information to come back. You gonna give a copy to them, correct? Yeah, if you give that copy to Janelle, then they can, you wanna do it now?
I'll give the copy to Janelle when I do the second one.
Okay, so Janelle, if that copy don't come to you, then whatever you and Ms. Fields do, I think it's important, if I'm gonna order it without objection, that you get the copy. And so I want that copy gotten, what's the resolution number, Ms. Fields?
Resolution number CA one five six two oh one six, and up above it has one six zero zero three seven. I'm not sure if part of this has been cut off, but it was presented three nine sixteen.
Yeah, so I want that, you to have a copy of that if you try to probe and get that. Ms. Fields, what's the third, um, request that you got?
Okay, I'll read it all as you requested.
No, I, I just wanna know what's the referral, I, I don't think we gotta hear it all.
It's a request for finance, it's to understand our city processes. Question one, when does the city post a purchase or other transaction as a liability on the balance sheet? Is it when we have signed a purchase order, when we sign a contract, when we receive an invoice? When does it show up on the income statement? When is it posted in accounts payable? Please explain the step-by-step process for me.
Ms. Fields, I'm gonna ask that that be a discussion item on the next finance committee meeting.
This is a referral request, because there's more.
And I'm not gonna order it without objection. Now, if you wanna wait till we come back to finance and have longer discussion, but, um, two of them, but this long one, I'm gonna have to digest.
Mister Chair, I don't believe I need your permission for a referral request.
You might don't outside of this meeting, but if I'm gonna order it without objection in the past or whatever, you might not need it. You might can do this on a regular day. You might can come and meet with secretaries and Janelle and them, I did referrals in my last term, and didn't need no council person. So I don't know, but I'm not gonna order it and put my rubber stamp on it without objection, because it's long. Now, if this council wanna, what's your point?
So, Mister Chair, is, is it, is, are you saying that in order for us to, to put in referral, the chair has to approve our referral?
What I'm saying is that this chair, on that long referral, ain't finna send it without objection till we go through it. And so what I was beginning to say is if she wanna wait till after this motion to postpone and come back out, and we spend more time on it, then I'll put my without objection, but yeah, I'm saying, I'm not gonna say referrals without objection that I got something to do with, um, just because, what's your point of information?
Um, and, and through you, to the president, President Winfrey, is that our normal process, that referrals that we have have to be approved by chairpeople?
I don't think that's what he's saying, uh, if you don't, if you ask the question, I don't think he... I think what he's saying is, the liberals, he wants to dissect, understand if you're doing, uh, approved, without objection.
And I don't wanna do it in this discussion.
And he's not saying that it's gonna happen, he just wanna know what you think. And what he is asking, is if we could go ahead and either send this, approve my, my motion, or shoot it down, and then come back.
And Ms. Galloway, that question is better going to Ms., um, Brown. Because I don't, the, the, the president described what I said perfectly, but that still might not satisfy you. So if Ms. Brown wanna answer, she can, but my position go.
Can we do referrals without them coming through, any of these?
I think so, but not in this meeting, I said in this meeting, I'm not gonna do it without objections until such time that whatever.
See?
So I understand all of it.
Well, and, and...
But this is, we on a motion, and so we gave some latitude on a motion, but the discussion and relevant discussion on this motion is if you gonna vote yea or nay on the motion that's here. And so we gave some latitude, this one seemed to be a little complex and long, and so I said, let's continue with the motion. Uh, any more discussion on this motion, Ms. Fields?
Mister Mays and Mister President, I have been here for three years. Mr. Mays and Mr. President, I have been here for three years. I have never, ever heard of anyone's referral request being denied.
Were you hearing now?
Nor a chair having to approve whatever was on that referral request.
Where you heard it now, Ms. Fields?
So, Mr. Mays may like to know more about my referral. I was willing to read it. He asked, he said I could make my referrals now, so that's why I am making my referrals. I went to all the trouble, since it is lengthy, of typing it up, so it could be clear to the secretary. I also wanna point out that.
But you wanna read it, and I'm saying, I'm not gonna deal with that.
Mr. Mays, I have the floor. Please don't interrupt me.
And I'm gonna take, this is a, I'm gonna rule you out of order, because we on a motion. We on a motion, and the discussion is gonna be germane to this motion.
Point of order, you can't just interrupt somebody.
Uh, your point is denied.
I feel that.
Okay, then, you appealed it. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
It's been a second. State your appeal, Ms. Worthen.
Uh, you keep interrupting those who you've given the floor to, and it's not correct. She can't ever finish what she wants to say. That is you being out of order.
So, let me say this. If I give you the floor on the discussion of the motion, it don't mean you can talk about Mars and Venus. You gonna be germane to that motion. And if I give you latitude, that don't mean that you gonna get all the latitude in the world. We got a motion on the floor. You got five minutes on each motion. You can speak twice a total of five minutes, and I'm gonna interrupt Ms., um, Worthen. So, I ain't in favor of your appeal. Ms. Fields done made two referrals. Now, she wanna read some. I'm ruling her out of order. I'm not giving that much latitude. I'm not gonna break the five-minute rule for her, you, or nobody else unless y'all vote to suspend the rule. So, I do get to interrupt. I do get to monitor and keep a meeting going. So, your appeal, um, that I can't interrupt, I can't interrupt. I did interrupt. Um, Mr. Garrett?
Yeah, uh, the reason I seconded that appeal, because I did feel like she was speaking, you didn't let her finish her statement, and the reason that I support her making these referrals was because earlier in the conversation, I heard you say that you would allow her to make the referrals, um, before we could vote on that motion, before we went to another committee. So, that's my chances.
And so, a referral is usually quick, Mr. Garrett. This is, we got five-minute rules on discuss. And so, however you wanna vote, that's your business, but I can't even violate the five-minute rule if she got long reading and talking and do, so you gonna have to decide how you vote on me interrupting her to keep this meeting going. You don't get the floor and just have it. I'm gonna direct and interrupt. Ms. Fields?
I clearly asked whether Ms., whether the chair would like me to read these, or since I had them in written format, could I just submit them to the secretary for the referral? And he said, I could read them. So, I started reading them, and then the chair, while I was speaking, while I had the floor, just interrupted me. Now, earlier, the chair made a statement, and I see, um, our clerk wanting to raise her hand. Earlier, the chair made a statement that we don't even have to have, make referrals during committees. Well, recently, I wanted to make these referrals outside of committee, and I sent an email request to, uh, the city clerk and our two secretaries. And I was informed verbally, the referrals were never made. I was informed verbally by Ms. Johnson today, that according to Ms. Brown, referrals have to be made during committee. So, I would like clarification on that.
Ms., Ms., um, Fields, a lot of this stuff, if y'all stay, can be cleared up in government or how government operate. And so, it's a lot of government or op stuff going on, on how stuff should operate, but that's exactly what government or ops were. Now, if you tried to make these referrals outside the meeting, and then you heard you had to do them in a meeting, I've just heard and seen Ms. Brown them say you don't have to. Ms. Brown, you trying to be recognized in the middle of this discussion. Proceed.
The fact of the case, you think it's more, it's really more of a casework, lack of a better word, casework issue, not a referral.
More of a what?
Casework issue.
They're gonna refer.
Yes.
Case.
Well, if I could, if I could, many time, a lot of research has to go into an item, item, property, as it relates to the questions that are being posed in a particular document, or whatever it is taken. I believe that this was originally sent to the finance department, but they thought that the referral number had to be taken up. And all the time, the referral numbers, for one, something was probably disappeared before this body, or wanted to recall, lay it out, it can be. So, what you have basically, and we get over this more of a casework issue, it will require some research on the product, and that's what's interesting.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Brown. Now, let me say this, any.
We're in the process of reporting the children, and you.
On this appeal, anybody who hasn't discussed this appeal, got something they wanna say, pro or con on this appeal? Uh, Ms., uh, Fields, you wanna second round? Go ahead. Yes, Anna?
Well, the current appeal, as I understand it, is an appeal against, basically, uh, you interrupted me taking the floor. Is that where we are?
I think you're right. And this appeal with me interrupting is just, it piggybacks on what Ms. Brown said. It's wrong. I don't wanna refer it without objection till I hear more. And so, when I interrupted you to say that, then I believe it's what I should do, 'cause you done went, in my opinion, twice, five minutes, whatever rule a person wanna go of, and however they vote is their business. And if it ain't no more discussion on this appeal, um, Ms. Fields, you done spoke twice. You made the rules. Um, you would be out of order speaking again. You want me to violate them, and if y'all do, y'all gonna appeal me? That'll be your third time. So, here we go. Um, if y'all ain't got no other discussion, then.
I do, I have a point, uh.
You got the floor if you want it. What you need a point of anything? Just take the floor.
It may be the second time she spoke, but she's still at the floor. She only said one.
We on a motion, Ms., um, Worthen. I didn't make these rules. I don't even agree with. Now, she can speak again, and then, go ahead, Ms. Fields, and when it's the third time, if nobody objecting, nobody appeal, then do it for me. Go ahead, Ms. Fields.
Mr. Mays, you interrupted me, and not because you thought this should, could be discussed later. You just interrupted me to just stop me from talking, and you do it all the time.
I'm gonna interrupt you. Now, you out of order. This is your third time. Did nobody else do it? You only get twice, and so, now I'm gonna interrupt you again.
Because she doesn't like what I have to say.
No, it's the rules you made. You only get two, up to five minutes. I just did that to see was Worthen, Garrett, or anybody else who pinpoints me on the rules when you call them, don't say something. I laid it out for them. They should've said, I appeal you, Mr. Chair, for letting her speak three times. They didn't say nothing. I want the rules applied properly. Any more discussion on this, Mr. Garrett?
Well, understanding she was still speaking on her second time, when you took the floor back from her, but she had not finished, so that's why I did not say she's out of order, because she was still on her second.
I ruled out order for a third time. I don't care what you do, if you wanna appeal me for saying the third time, you can do that. I don't care what your logic is. I'm going off of mine. Now, any more discussion? If not, we can vote on this appeal. The chair will state the appeal. Ms. Worthen appealed my ruling for interrupting her, and I interrupted her to say I wasn't gonna make that referral without objection. And don't need to read. All in favor of the appeal, vote yea or raise your hand. So, all opposed. So, the vote count is six to three, um, in the appeals favor, that I shouldn't have interrupted her. So, Ms. Fields, proceed. But I'm watching the clock, and then we in the motion, and I'm gonna still rule it ungermane.
How can you rule it ungermane when I haven't even spoken yet?
You got the floor. Speak on what you speaking. Now, I'm gonna rule you out of order. This ain't no argument. I said, proceed. You want an appeal, proceed.
There are reasons why I want this as a formal referral request and not casework, Ms. Brown. And if you had wanted to speak to me on this issue, I wish you had spoken to me earlier. I want this for particular reasons, as a formal referral request, even though it is lengthy. And to save time, I have put it in writing, and I had agreed to either put it in writing or read it aloud, as the chair chose. The chair chose to have me read it. So, I started reading it, and then I was interrupted. So, if the chair would prefer now, I will just hand over these two written referral requests, and I want this as a referral request to the secretary.
Point of order. I would ask that you can do that anytime, any day of the week, and it don't have to be in this committee.
Point of information.
What's your point?
A point of order is a breach of the rules. You cannot call a point of order until you state that what rule has been breached, Ms. Mays.
I'm telling you what I'm doing, Ms., Ms. Fields.
What rule did I just breach?
I'm telling you what I'm doing. We in a motion, and I said I give you latitude. You can hand whatever you wanna hand, but it ain't got my blessing. So, now, if there's any more discussion on this motion, I'm not, never giving you latitude in my discussion no more, 'cause y'all wanna play a game. I don't have to sit and let you read nothing long on no motion you get five minutes on. You not gonna run this meeting and just start making up rules, and everybody who voted for her to have more than five minutes and not get interrupted is more crazier than I thought. She don't get no privileges like that. It's five minutes twice, and I'm gonna interrupt anybody, and y'all can vote against y'all own rules, and that ain't nothing but chaos. Now, do we know what the motion is on the floor? What is the motion on the floor, Mr. President?
Motion on the floor is to recess finance and.
That's what the motion was. So, the motion was to recess finance, do the other committees, and then come back for finance. And, um, any more discussion on that motion, Mr. Griggs?
We haven't done it yet.
That's why.
And my position is, I probably will be voting no. I don't care if it pass or fail, but I'm gonna vote no, because we still gotta do the same thing. We gotta come back, and we gotta, um, adjourn all discussion items to the next meeting. The only thing we had left was the discussion of Ms. Brown's stuff as it relates to this hearing. And so, why treat her and anybody like this? I ain't gonna be a part of. I'm gonna vote no on recessing and going to other meetings when I got this guest at the table. I'm gonna vote no. And so, Ms. Brown and anybody else who's witnessing this, when I'm conducting finance committee meeting with all the mess and delays we had today, I'm not gonna support a recess when this invited guest is here and at the table in the middle of this. I think it's rude and wrong, and, um, the other committees could wait when it come to these two million dollar contracts and Ms. Brown. So, I'll be voting no, and I wanna finish up this business. And then, if y'all went to the other committees, I'd leave and go to Hasselbrink and then back. This has been a mess. So, I, any more discussion on this motion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion to recess, signify by saying aye or raise your hand. All opposed, signify by saying aye or raise your hand. So, I need a hand count. All in favor of the recess, raise your hand. All opposed. So, looks like the vote count is five yes, four no. Mr. Griggs, your vote was to recess, correct? Yeah, based upon her lobbying, you in the middle of, so we are now recessed until after the other committees. Ms. Brown, hang in there.
Let's just, let's just.
Prefer me. You are legislative, sir.
I understand your point.
I understand that when they plan that, and all them long referrals.
Uh, I'd like to call the legislative committee to order. Um, there's a special order, one eight zero four seven six, for the citywide advisory committee. That will.
Madam Chair, uh, I may get you to, uh, passport and check.
Oh, okay. Sure.
We have, we have a history of, of doing stuff like that. So, can we, can we get these?
Well, I was gonna postpone this. And then you could.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Galloway.
I make a motion to postpone the special order for the next legislative committee.
We've made a motion to postpone, Mr. Garrett.
A seconded motion.
And seconded, any discussion?
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Mr. Mays.
I would do a substitute motion to postpone not just the special order, but the discussion items as well, and to the next legislative committee meeting.
Mr. Garrett?
A seconded motion.
Okay, there's been a motion to postpone discussion order and the old upstanding discussion items. Any discussion?
Now, will we, if we postpone it, we still are gonna deal with the ordinances after that?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
Mr. Griggs?
Uh, I've already read the SEWAC stuff.
Postpone.
Well, I know. We talked about postponement, and now we're discussing that postponement. Okay, that's what I'm discussing. I've already, I see the SEWAC information. I guess everybody had the chance to, to review it. It looked more than me, so I'm just wondering about why postpone.
Yes. Um, because of various reasons, I didn't have time to compare what had been presented with the original one, and, um, I would like two more weeks just to compare the original one, the one that the city attorney's office presented. I don't know what changes were made, if any.
Ms. Fields, um, if you look at it, the owners, the, anything that's in apps is, has been added. So, you'll see on copy what is the old and the new together. So, you can see right there on the same page.
Thank you, Ms. Fields. I am aware of that convention that we use for ordinances, but thank you for finding that out. Um, I, I still would like to postpone it for two weeks, please.
Any other discussion?
Um, Madam Chair.
Mr. Mays?
Yeah, I'm gonna vote to postpone this stuff that I'm against, because I don't really, hopefully, we'll never have committee meetings and council meetings all on the same day. Um, this has been not good for me, and I'm not in favor of it, and, um, you know, the way it's scheduled, maybe I'm changing my mind as I talk. I was the maker of the substitute motion, but I don't have to vote for it. I think I'm gonna be the oddball. I might be ready to sit here to twelve, one o'clock at night. So, I'm not gonna support the motion to postpone.
Okay, if there's no other discussion, those in favor of postponing, say aye or you can.
Aye.
Uh, Mays?
Nay.
Any extensions? If it passes, to postpone. Now, we're on orden, ordinances. What is the pleasure of this valley? Mr. Garrett?
Take the motion that we approve, uh, ordinances of one eight zero four eight four.
Point of order.
Uh, Mr. Mays?
We don't approve them here. We send them to council.
Approve to council. Send to council.
Oh, did you do both?
No, just one.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor to, uh, move one eight zero four eight four to council. Is there a second?
I'll say.
Mr. Griggs, second?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Mays?
I'd like to do a substitute motion, not only to move one eight zero four eight four to council, but one eight zero four eight five to council as well.
Uh, Mr. Winfrey?
I support that.
Okay, so there's a motion now, uh, a substitute motion to move both ordinances to council discussion.
Ms. Fields?
For first reading, please.
I have not, this is the first time I've seen these ordinances. I have a question. Were we provided with these previously, because I think there's some pretty important information in these, and I think these need to be compared with. Uh, it looks like, the copies I have, I have three pages here that have no headings, and it's page seventeen, nineteen, and twenty. and it's pages 17, 19, and 21, so I don't know if I'm missing pages 18 and 20. But I'm not even sure what ordinance this is from. It looks like Ethics and Purchasing is on one, something else from Purchasing. I think this is a pretty important ordinance, and I think we need to have all pages. And I don't know if the rest of council have read these and reviewed these and compared them to the original. Have I missed a meeting? Were these provided to us earlier? Were these provided to us earlier?
Uh, Mr. Mays?
She asked a question. Oh, I'm sorry, but it is 35 since November.
Mr. Mays, you're out of order.
Oh, okay. Point of information.
Mr. Mays?
Yes, you've missed 35 from November to June. I can answer that.
Point of information is not to state a fact, it is to ask the question.
Oh, there, okay. Do you realize?
That's still not appropriate point of information.
She asked a question.
May I continue, Madam Chair?
Are you done?
Oh, yeah. I said that a point of information. Do she realize she missed 35?
Ms. Fields, you may continue.
I believe there's a substitute motion on the floor. I would like to amend that motion to actually postpone this for two weeks until we have a chance to read these and to find out if there are pages missing and to compare it with the original. And since these are all in caps, the city attorney stated the convention that the city uses. When we see an ordinance, if we strike through it, it means they want to change that language in all caps, it's all new language. So I don't know if this council has had an opportunity to read what appears to be all-new language, and I think...
Point of order. Point of order. Did she put a motion on the floor? If so, why are you allowing her to discuss it?
There, what is the motion?
The motion is to amend the motion to postpone this for two weeks.
Mr. Mays, you've made your point. I took it, and now let's move on. She made her motion. Is there a second?
I know you don't want me to make no point, but I'm gonna make them.
Mr. Mays?
That's my name.
You do not have the floor. You need to be quiet.
Sure.
And let the meeting proceed.
Sure. Point of order.
Mr. Mays, what is your point of order?
When I raise a point of order about a motion being made, probably second, recognize my point and then rule on it. Don't just tell me to be quiet.
I really wish you were correct.
Okay, that's what I wanna hear. I'm correct. Rule on it.
Ms. Fields?
I have a point of information. The secretary has just stated which ordinance, from the papers I'm handed, I can't tell which ordinance it are.
Point of order.
So my question is...
Point of order.
What is your point of order, Mr. Mays?
Has the motion been seconded, and if so, by who?
This is a point of information.
She had a point of information.
Excuse me. The reason I said that is because Mr. Mays just sent both of them. There are two on the agenda. I don't really agree with her on the two. He sent the order to council. There's a substitute motion that's out of the...
Is your motion for both of these ordinances?
It's for both of them, since I don't even know what I have in hand here.
Okay, so there's a motion. Is there a second to that motion? There's a second discussion. Ms. Fields?
Okay, once again, I only have three pages of all all caps. I don't know what ordinance this pertains to. I don't know where the missing pages are. We're supposed to be moving forward, some ordinances to pass. I don't even know what I'm looking at. I don't know what ordinances these are. I don't know, is it all purchasing ordinance? Is it separate? I mean, this is ridiculous. How can we pass this unless your handouts contain different information than mine? But I would suggest that before City Council passes an ordinance for first reading, we actually read the ordinance, understand what ordinances it's to, and compare it with the original, if there is one, to see the ramifications of changes to the ordinance. To me, once again, since the convention is you cross out what the old language is and the new languages in all caps, my three pages are all in new caps. So this is apparently all new information, and I cannot conceivably read through this and compare it to the new between this meeting and a council meeting to be held within an hour. That's why it needs to be postponed.
Um, I do only see 1-804-84 in all caps, Ms. Field.
Yeah, I don't know what council and bill has, but I have a sneaking suspicion that it hurts with package that you guys have that has nothing to do with the law department. Okay? So, I mean, I'd like to dispel some of your confusion because...
This is what I just gave them.
Yeah, I don't know where you got that from. All I can tell you is that there are two things that are on the agenda, and there's one, 1-804-84, which is the one for... Yeah, that's not ours. We didn't provide the supplemental materials.
No, that's not what she was looking at.
The one that we have, that we have is chapter 46, which specifically says for consumer hearing adjustment of bill. So it specifically says what it is, and we provide these to council in the normal course of when they will be provided to you so that you would have an opportunity to review them. So I'm not responsible for the packets or anything like that, but we provide the information so that you can have it for your fact.
Madam Chair.
Well, Mr. Winfrey was next, and then...
The ordinance number 1-804-84 has nothing to do with purchasing. It has to do with taxes and do of, I mean, service charges that we attack. And I believe, I'm puzzled. I think that might be that's an assignment. Whether it's a service charge, and these are, I think it's like either 56 or 52 units. And it's low to moderate income level. It has, it's just a service and bill of taxes, is what they're asking. And the ordinance is associated with, I work with, I know. That's right.
Yeah, I'm not gonna vote in the motion to postpone this. My vote is really wanting to move it forward to first reading. Ms. Fields argues to postpone it because of the vote in an hour or less. This is first reading. You still got second reading. Ms. Fields would have ample time to sort it out, to vote yes or no in between first and second reading. And so I'm, will be voting no on this motion to postpone, and hopefully it'll get back to the motion to move it forward to first reading. And Ms. Fields and anybody else will have ample time to discuss this in committee meetings and also prior to second reading. So I'm gonna be voting no on the motion to postpone at this time.
Ms. Galloway, then Fields, and then Griggs.
Suzanne, how much grant dollar money did this project receive?
Uh, this is not grant dollars. This is just the pilot?
No, this is not.
You're talking about Avon?
Yeah. We allocated them some money for the purchase of this project. Do you remember that?
Oh, I'm sorry. You're absolutely right. I think it was 200,000 dollars. I cannot remember.
Well, that was how much... That's how much HUD did in renovations for this.
No, and...
Right, but the grant dollars that they received was more than 200,000 for this project.
I really cannot recall offhand how much that was. I have to get to that. And this is totally separate from that.
Well, the reason why I'm asking that is because a lot of money was put into getting this project up and running. And so part of it was, it was supposed to provide affordable housing. And I don't know, I haven't rented something in a long time, but when you look at the form that you gave us, and it says that this is towards 80% of those that are in, what is the wording that I want to use, what they use? Quant, the apartments provide needed affordable housing to residents whose incomes are 80% or less of the median income of the area. Right? And so, yet, in this proposal, it's showing that two bedrooms are $700, and three bedrooms are $759. Is that relative to that realm of people that are in that 80% or below?
So this, it says market rent is 700 for two bedrooms, and market rent for three bedrooms is $759. So the way that rents are made affordable is this is based upon HUD's fair market rent values. And so that's something that's established. So these are actually market rents for $759. So they're saying 42 of those units are gonna be at 700, 14 are gonna be at 759. And so, yes, they would, they have to be within HUD's fair market rent schedule. And without having that in front of me, we can't, the rents cannot ignore them HUD's fair market rent. So I would say that, yes, that is, that's an affordable rent decision for two and a three-bedroom unit. 80% of median family income, so for a family of four in the City of Lynn, it's approximately $40,000. So that's what median family income is approximately $50,000 and I'm rounding. So 80% of that is approximately $40,000 for a family of four, and it's adjusted by family size. That's a, that's a income determination that is provided by HUD. That's not something we adjust.
So you have something from HUD that shows that? And the reason why I'm saying is because we know that 40% of our population is in the poverty area.
Right.
And so although those figures seem like they will be comparable to our area, they're not. And so I'm, I'm just gonna be asking some more questions. I know that this is in my area, but there are a lot of people that have called me from that apartment complex, and their rent is going up, some of them double. And they are concerned about where they're going to live and where they're going to go. And so although I am happy that this project is happening in my area, there are some people over there that are being displaced because they cannot afford to live over there now. And some of them have lived over there for 10 and 12 years. And so although, so for me, this is a double sore. It sounds wonderful, but there's a displacement of many of the residents that have lived there for quite some time. And so I just want everybody to hear on the record that I am getting calls, and it's not just as happy as everybody would want it to seem. And although some people can look and say that $700 is 80%, I am here to tell you it is wrong. If I had to pay $700 today, that would be a stress. Some people don't own homes because of that. And so I'm just saying, this doesn't seem like fair market rate for 80% of an income in our area. So I'm not trying to say anything against Communities First. This is not about them. This is about the people that live in this area. $700 is a lot of money, and so that's all I want to say.
Point of information.
But I do know that information through you two. Oh, through the chair. Oh, point of information. It's a privilege motion.
Mr. Mays?
I'm trying to figure out if Ms. Galloway gonna vote on the motion to postpone, yes or no.
You'll know when I vote.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's what the discussion should be.
It is. I'm getting information.
Okay, that really is a valid point of information anyway. So are you...
I am. Thank you.
Okay, well, now that I'm referencing the correct pages, and just for the record, I don't know why, but I was given three extra pages in my packet that make no sense whatsoever. So you were confused. That's why I was confused. Okay, now that I'm looking at both of these, I think that Ms. Galloway's concern is a valid one. And I don't know what she would like to do to verify maybe additional discussion with planning and development over these market rates. I don't know what's to be done about that, but whether it's a good idea, this is in her area. And I know a lot of seniors and long-term folks live in this area. And to me, that seems like a pretty high rent, the City of Lynn. But regarding the second ordinance, I'd like to refer Mr. Mays and Ms. Worthing to this particular ordinance. Now, both of them have done probably the most work on water ordinances and policies. And I don't remember all this discussion. I don't know if they have thoroughly looked at these proposed changes, but it's just yet another reason why this should be postponed so they could understand, because there's some significant changes here on these two ordinances. And it's about the disputed water and sewage billing, customer hearing, adjustment of bills on leaks, et cetera. So I am curious whether this has been discussed at length in Legislative Committee previously. And I would suggest that it needs to be postponed for further discussion because I don't know if anyone has actually seen this and is in agreement with this policy.
Hi, there's Griggs, me.
Um, I don't remember ever discussing this. And honestly, because of the MML conference, I did not have a chance to look over this. I don't know the review. So I am in favor of postponing, especially for 1-804-85. I've seen that billing adjustments will not be granted for usage above the customer's average monthly consumption due to a seasonal usage, a leak caused by a third party. I'd really like to look over that. Also, 1-804-84. If rent is $700 a month, I can tell you right now, I have my master's degree, and I'm still working on making more money. However, my income last year, and I have no shame in saying this because I do try to get all my jobs together and support my family, was $33,000. There is a poor family of three, so I have two small children. There's no way that I can afford $750 a month for rent. No, I wouldn't be able to eat, probably go naked, because we wouldn't have clothes to buy. So I'm really concerned, especially since you've gotten calls, how this process works. If we can get that explained further about, like, how do we go below that? How does this work before we approve it? That would, that would help me in the end.
Mr. Winfrey?
What I wanna do, what I wanna say is, I didn't go to the conference.
I'm sorry. I didn't see your hand, Mr. Mays. Did you want us to think again? No, you were next. I saw his hand, and then...
Mr. Gara wanted to say something.
Santino.
I think, I think one of the important pieces of this ordinance, 1-804-85, says that any consumer may request a hearing. And that's what it is. It talks about how a consumer may request a hearing if they have some issues with their water. And then it talks about how the city administrator can act as a referee. And it goes on to talk about those weekends. Some of the stuff that it blocks out, or it's scratched out here, or marked out. I think it's in the consumer's benefit. So that's, at least that's, that's my understanding of the...
Uh, Mr. Winfrey? The reason why we're reading this is because Councilman Mays, he, and I think he too, a customer of one, there was an issue about whether or not they can have more than one legal adjustment in their, like, life. So now it's changed, and the proposal is to have, to have this revisited every year. So it's not just likely to just get one and it can never come back. So part of the hearing process exists more of a case-by-case basis.
Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you, Madam Chair, Suzanne. Is the houses' units subsidized for low income?
They are, there is not an additional subsidy provided, is my understanding. These were MISHDA, Avon Park Apartments. It was a MISHDA bi-tech project, and it was foreclosed upon, it was actually, I'm sorry, it was a Court Street Village project, and it was foreclosed, it was going to be foreclosed upon by MISHDA. Communities first stepped in to actually, that's Councilman Galloway, that's what he's referring to, community. Communities first stepped in to purchase the mortgage so that we could retain this affordable housing resource. And they will be the owner and developer of this project now.
Through you, Madam Chair, Suzanne. Was the income similar to that before the community first stepped in?
Yes.
It was comparative to that. So do you have an idea what the rent was prior to the community first stepping in?
I do not know what the previous rents were, but I know that in order for the project to remain a bi-tech, viable bi-tech project and be eligible for, for the pilot, they have to remain affordable. So there's fair market rents established, and without having that information in front of me, I can provide that to you. But they have to remain affordable. So those are rents that are established by HUD. And this cannot be out of... So, those are rents that are established by HUD and this cannot be out of, out of that ground. So, I would say that yes, these are by order.
Well, all of the, 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 all of the real estate that community faces acquiring, especially on the north side of Lynn, I'm hoping their prices be subsidized because this ain't gonna work in an impoverished community because nobody on my side of town could dream of paying this kind of money for a two-bedroom. So, um, and I know they're acquiring a lot of property. And I'm concerned up through Ballenger Road up there, the old whatever bottom of Claire and Hospital. But, uh, we need to look into what they doing because what they doing now ain't gonna work. And whoever they doing it for, I'm talking about community first. I'm not a fan of them because I don't think they doing it other than just gentification for what my perspective is. Because I see a lot of property that they're acquiring and I'm wondering, even when I go up by the old, going down Grand Travis, it'd be empty more than it'd be, it don't seem like it's getting utilized to its fullest. And I'm looking at all these properties on the north side under their name, community first. I don't know if it's my foundation funding them, but whoever funding them that money, they need to consider the people that they putting them in because we can't afford gentification. That can't happen. So, uh, I wish somebody would look and find out what the, 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 uh, rent was prior to them acquiring that real estate. But, uh, I'm not a fan of high rent with no subsidies, no kind of way for a low income because if not, this city will be formerly known as where poor folks live. And I'm done.
Um, Mr. Garrett?
Yeah, oh, yeah, my too, I have the concerns with the pricing on that because I know on my side of town, that's, uh, that'd be a really, really nice house that had seven hundred a month. These are apartments that, I don't know how much rent, let me ask you, could it be?
I'm sorry, what?
They are apartments, I don't know.
These are condos.
They are condos, okay. But I need to, likely better than you to just make an apartment or taking, but still the price is, uh...
Really close to the downtown.
Okay, yeah, and the prices are still kind of steep, uh, from what I'm seeing. So, I have a concern with that issue and that is, Mr. Davis, especially identification with them, so I'm like that.
Yes, it is.
Living in a community where you've lived in your whole life, uh, so, uh, I'd like to look into that a little more. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I've been trying to get it.
Okay.
So, uh, like I say, the only question on this is do you postpone it? And the only argument is I need to know more about it or I don't agree. Well, you can do that in between first and second read. It don't pass until it pass second read. It can be at second read and you can refer it back to a committee. So, right now, we at first read. The president and whoever, we was in, um, Grand Rapids last week. He scheduled something to fit. Everything is crunched and that's why when Ms. Galloway said to me in a certain way, you'll find out when the vote come. Well, I surely will, but the proper discussion on the motion is yea or nay. I've said once, I'm gonna vote no to postpone it. And when I vote no to postpone it and move it to council for first read, it still can come back to committee in between first and second read and it can be scrapped, it can be moved forward. So, that's the relevant discussion. And when I discuss a motion, if I'm asked, I'm gonna pretty much tell you what I'm gonna vote yea or nay on. So, I'm smart enough to know, I don't have to move to postpone first read. I can move it to first read and then still discuss it and either move it forward in second or scrap it all together and start over. So, that's what this discussion is. And so, Mr. Griggs, as they lobbying, I'm lobbying Garrett and everybody else too, but it ain't no secret what I'm gonna do. And that's how I discuss motions. You wanna know pros and cons? That's what Robert's rules say. Listen to some pro argument and some con argument. So, I done heard the pro and the con is, this is first read. We was in Grand Rapids last week. Y'all act like we done had committee meetings. This is committee meeting and it can still be in a committee meeting next week or whenever. So, the motion to postpone, the substitute motion, I'll be voting not to postpone and move it forward. And when I know more about it, then and only then will I vote to quash it or kill it. But the path I'm taking is for those who did the work, Ms. Will, I appreciate, Ms. Will, I appreciate the work that y'all did so far on that leak adjustment. I'll look at it closer in between first and second read unless they vote to postpone it. Cause they lobbying Garrett and stuff now as I speak properly, cause they ain't spoke certain ways on their postponement and then they hiding, well, you'll know when I vote. You'll know before I vote. I'll be voting to approve your work for first read. It's a lot of legislation y'all do that we don't do. And so, I appreciate it and I'll be looking close at it and then I'll decide what I do with it. So, I'm not saying what I'm gonna do, Ms. Will, but I'm smart enough to keep stuff moving and then decide later what I'll do. I'll be voting no on the postpone. Thank you.
Mr. Griggs?
Uh, I'm waiting for Mr. Worthy.
Are you sure?
Yeah, I'm waiting on him. You can go.
He wants to.
She playing a game?
No.
No, I wasn't.
Well, some of y'all, point of information, point of information, point of information.
Mr. Mays?
All right. I'm ready.
Do Ms., do Mr. Griggs realize that Eva Worth and Kate Fields and others be talking and doing with folks when I'm talking?
Mr. Griggs?
I don't appreciate that.
Okay, I personally, and I don't know how many of these council people, need to know how you're gonna vote. I really don't wanna know. You're the only one that keeps saying, Captain Mays, you're the only one that keeps saying how you're gonna vote.
Point of information.
If it's not a relevant point of information, I am going to give you your first warning because you keep interrupting speakers just to interrupt and state your own opinion. So, I would think before you ask this point of information.
Okay.
Who are you talking to?
I'm talking to you, Mr. Mays.
That's my point of information. Who are you talking to?
I am talking to you, Mr. Mays.
Right now, you done got me a new point of information. Who are you lecturing and talking to?
Wow.
That ain't your job to talk down to me, ma'am. I'm full of ground. Now, I'm ruling you out of order and I'm giving you your first warning. Don't you ever talk to me, just ask me what my point of information is.
I'm, I...
You sound like a fool.
You are out of order.
You talk all right, I am.
Okay.
You talk all right when you talk to me like I'm a kid. You ask me what's my point of information. You out of order.
Okay.
And I'm gonna appeal your ruling to talk to me that way.
I need the officer.
No, you gonna need those answers in a second to this appeal. I'm appealing your ruling on how you talking to me.
Is there a second to the appeal?
I second his appeal.
Uh, there's an appeal to the, to the ruling, Mr. Mays, out of order.
That ain't what I'm appealing.
Well, that, you just appealed, I said you were out of order. And you said, I will appeal that and she seconded it.
Well, argue your point, I'm gonna argue mine. I know what happened.
What is your appeal then?
I can tell you what my appeal is. When I say point of information, you ask what's my point? You don't lecture me and down me. It's a privileged motion. Your job is to not start talking. Y'all just said I talk too much. Your job is to say, what's your point? Not to lecture and down me prior to asking what's my point.
So, I did rule you out of order, Mr. Mays.
I appealed your conversation on how you addressed my point of information.
So, your ruling, you, there's, I, I don't understand what we're doing.
I know it's a lot you don't understand.
Yeah, man.
Excuse me. I'm not, I...
He's explaining.
Yeah, he's upset because I said he needs to think before he states a point of information.
That ain't your job.
Now, you, you, if he's done, then you talk about it.
I did rule him out of the order at that point. I only ruled him out of order until he started screaming.
I appeal you giving me lectures versus a point of information. It's a field, now it's been seconded.
Mr. Mays, I'm gonna say this as chair. You conduct your meetings the way you'd like. You say my name, Ms. Fields' name, Ms. Galloway's name, anytime you please. And you lecture us and you tell us to be quiet and what you're gonna do as chair. So, unless you want to discontinue that, then for me as chair, I will say, you are using point of information incorrectly.
I hadn't even stated.
You are interrupting other members of this council and I am defending their right to speak. I will not allow you to interrupt for a point of information because you don't like what they're saying. We will move on.
Are you done? No, we won't move on.
Yes, we will, Mr. Mays.
We in an appeal. So, we cannot be recognized if we gonna move on. I'm an appeal, but it's just second.
I rule you out of order. You need to be quiet.
Point of order.
Or else I would have to, sir, just, uh, take you out.
Point of order.
Mr. Mays, please tell me your point of order and which rule is broken.
You said we moving on, ain't nothing to discuss. In fact, we is in discussion on an appeal that's been made and properly seconded. You're out of order saying that and I'm asking for the flow.
No, there was an appeal to something that was never done. I spoke to you.
We don't get to that. We're ruling vote on it.
There is no appeal. There is no appeal. There is no, I did not rule that.
We got the right to discuss it.
I said, make sure that you, uh, state a point of information that's correct. Now, Mr. Griggs, you may continue.
No, point of order. Point of order. There's an appeal on the, properly on the flow.
But there is nothing to appeal.
We'll get to that.
There is no, Mr. President, I didn't, I didn't rule anything for there to be an appeal.
Yes, you did.
I absolutely did not.
Yes, you did. It's what you did. You didn't recognize my point of information.
The way I spoke to him.
And that's...
And I'm appealing that. It's out of order.
For an out of order.
You out of order.
Okay, listen, I am saying and I need help from the city attorney, um, possibly.
No, you need to recognize me.
Excuse me, I am not.
Point of order, I'm asking to be recognized.
I am chairing and I'm conducting this meeting. You were late.
Okay, sure, you don't know what the hell you doing.
That's your second warning.
Okay, give me three. We in an appeal, I'll appeal that too. Cause you, I'm calling you out of order, three times. We trying to do an appeal and get recognized and you talking about move on, Griggs. We in the middle of an appeal.
I need, uh, I need someone to help me.
I can help you.
No, I do not want you to help me.
I know you don't. Wow.
Uh, I spoke to him about being careful about his point of information.
Point of order.
Excuse me.
Point of order. Is she still arguing this appeal? You ain't the only one that get to argue. We get to argue too.
She's consulting with the attorney. Well, done.
And I have that right.
Now, she was moving on, Griggs.
No, she's a consultant.
Now, she consulting with the attorney, but I've been asking to be recognized, arguing the appeal, Mr. President. Quit babying them.
It's not baby.
That what you doing? Now, she just took the flow back, was giving it to Griggs, ignoring me. Now, she want some information. We got the right to discuss this among ourselves and she don't have the right to not call on us. But let her do it her way and you need to just, like, stay out of it. Cause she, cause, cause, cause she is crazy.
There was no ruling to be appealed. I need the city attorney's, uh, advice on this. I, I don't know where to go from here if I'm just gonna...
But it's with the appeal.
Yeah, I think the, like I said, this is, this is the reason that I'm telling you. It does appear that, um, there was an argument between you and House Mays about the comment that you made to the city warrant right to the point of order and what's your point. We kinda gave him a...
That's what, that's what it is.
That's what I...
And I believe it's correct in doing so as the, 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 the rules are point of order, what's your point?
It needed.
And so, you made a whole statement before you got to it.
Now, even with that being said, I think technically that's, I don't think you ruled him any particular way, but that was the issue was that, like I said, this is you guys' perception, this is perception of how that is to be taken by saying that instead of just following what the rule says is what's your point of order. If someone says, I want a order, the next thing to do is just to say, what's your point? And so, it kinda got, um, mixed in there. So, like I said, I don't think there is, um, based on the council rules and the Roberts rules, I don't think there is a necessarily a, an appeal to have on that. But the problem is, is that it just, it, it causes problems when you don't just go directly to what the rule is and do the rule. So, um, I don't...
And when they, um...
And the rule, I'm sorry, let me just give you one more thing because that's gonna be under rule twenty-five point five is the, the procedure for handling an appeal to the point of order.
Now, when they keep stating a point of information that's incorrect and used just to interrupt the speaker, how does the chair?
We need to go to your Roberts rule, talks about, um, an abuse of...
We hadn't even been, no question. She hasn't called us up. Point of order.
Mr. Mays, what is your point of order?
Let us argue our case.
What is your point of order?
That you messing up the appeal process with all of this and we trying to argue the case.
There is no appeal.
It is an appeal. It's been moved, made and properly seconded.
No, there is no appeal. I, I, as chair, I'm moving on, there is no...
Okay, well, we appealing the ruling of the chair.
I second it.
It was an appeal and everybody sitting at this table know. And so, I'm, you say you moving on.
I've been recognized for, Mr. Mays, would you like to reiterate for discussion?
And at, point of order, I'm talking.
Excuse me, you were not...
Point of order, I'm talking. You rec, you recognized me, didn't you?
I, I, for Mr. Mays, you were not recognized.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Mays.
Okay, everybody sitting at this table knew it was an appeal and it was made by me and seconded it by her. Now, I'm appealing you trying to rule it ain't and you gonna move on. It was one.
Any other discussion? I would just like to say as chair that, Mr. Mays, you had already abused point of information at least twice as I am chairing to interrupt speakers, to ask questions or phrase them in questions that are not true points of information. And that is something you need to look at Roberts rules for, uh, it is not meant to interrupt my colleagues and I don't care which colleague it is.
Point of order. We not on that appeal. You argued another appeal. You said it wasn't them, now you arguing it. I appeal you trying to move on saying it wasn't appeal. Argue that appeal. How about that?
That's not just what you just said and...
That's exactly where we at.
In any case, I will discuss what I deem important in this whole, whole discussion and it is important. So, I would like to say that point of information is being abused and it is the right of the chair to say such. Any other discussion?
Yeah. I'm gonna call for the question on you ruling it wasn't an appeal on the flow seconded properly by Ms., uh, whatever and moving. So, keep you from moving on, we can get back to the field. I call for the question on the second appeal.
Mr. Winfrey?
I support the motion.
Can some...
It's a call for the question. We'll tell you what it is after the call for the question. All you gotta do is ask.
Mr. Mays, I asked Mr. Winfrey. Okay. Those in favor of Mr. Mays?
Point of order. This is the call for the question.
Those in favor of the call to the question, raise your hand or say aye. Uh, Nays, abstentions. Those in favor of Mr. Mays' appeal, raise your hand and say aye.
Point of order. State what the appeal is, we don't know.
I, I can't.
I can, if you rely.
Mr. Mays.
Yeah. Everybody sitting at this table saying Jerry Winfrey seconded my appeal. She saying it ain't no appeal, move on. I appeal that. And so this, if we vote yes, I win, we don't move on. If you vote no, then it wasn't them, and you move on. So that's the yes and no vote on this second appeal.
All those in favor of Mr. Mays' appeal, vote by saying aye or raising your hand. Uh, those against? Uh, abstentions. I don't even know what.
Run everybody forward. We have one abstention, I have four of them.
There were five, one and one.
Four yeses.
There were five.
Five yeses? And three no's?
No, there was one no and one abstention.
Mr. Griggs?
No, Ms., Ms. Worth. We in the middle of an appeal.
You just voted on it.
Yeah, and you lost. You lost. You said it wasn't them. I said it was, you lost. We back to the original appeal that you said wouldn't happen. No, you don't. Not on that.
Yeah, that was six to over to appeal it.
Nope.
I think you do, you need to blow that out.
Yeah, I voted to appeal it, but I think it needs six.
You might be right.
We'll wait while we make sure.
You might be right. It's still, if y'all flow this way, and everybody who voted to flow it, that mean when they do an appeal, it's.
Mr. Mays, we are waiting. You don't need your power here.
So what, may I, so what, so what, what we wait for?
We are in a recess.
When we in a recess, I can talk. Whatever we in, you ain't gonna keep me from talking. And I'm telling you this, when y'all start knowing that it's appeal and disrespecting me, Winfrey, whoever else with these voting flaws, it's gonna be showing up some stuff going on. Everybody sitting here knew it wasn't appeal on the flow. And for those who want to abstain and vote no. This is crazy. No, it's honesty and truth and what you remember one over one. How you gonna say ain't no appeal on the flow? And they voting it ain't. Monica is reasonable. Same for.
There is intimidation.
Yeah, you know when there's an appeal on the flow, Monica, you gone with that. If you ain't paying that much attention, you need to resign.
I think there's intimidation while we are recess.
Everybody else is being respected when it come to our appeals. We don't know if it was one on the flow.
He's, he's saying, oh, it's our call, we voted this way. It's in clear bullying and intimidation while we're here.
Ain't nobody intimidating. You intimidate me. I'm tired of you and these other white folks talking about me and talking about it. Y'all intimidate me. Y'all intimidate me. I felt intimidated by you keep saying threatening white folks and women. Now you starting to intimidate me and harass me falsely. Now I'm tired of that mess. All that old racist intimidating, I feel harassed mess. For five, six months, you two white folks been saying that. Gone with that mess. It was an appeal made and properly seconded. We just voted. You abstained like you didn't know it was an appeal on the flow?
No, no, I stayed because in Roberts rule, in Roberts rule, the chair has the right to decide that you are out of order.
The second one, that wasn't what we was on. If we was on, was it an appeal on the flow? Then you vote, you said I abstained. Well, you ain't paying, it really was. Baby should listen to you.
No.
We, well, don't listen to nobody.
You was appealing saying she couldn't help you.
It was, she said I'm moving on. We said you can't, it's an appeal on the flow. So then I appeal that. She seconded the second appeal. Where's a she should move on. We didn't even get to discuss that. So you do what you want to with these clowns. I ain't down with it, and the truth is recorded. Everybody know it was an appeal on the flow. She talking about she moving on, she gonna ignore it. You can't ignore it unless we withdraw it or you vote on it. Well, you might didn't know.
No, I thought you were appealing.
Well, you weren't paying, just say y'all didn't pay attention. If you were paying attention, then you'd have knew that five of us voted that it was an appeal on the flow. Come on now.
Hey, anyway.
I ain't, I, I might have, I might have been born, I wasn't born. Yeah, good democracy and bad democracy. That's why Carrie, Vicky Van Buren, Scott and the rest of them. We know it's a democracy. Yeah, we ain't got time to do this every meet, every meet.
Whether there was an appeal on the.
That's correct.
That's why he was appealing.
No, because she was trying to pull a dog and act like it wasn't coming to discuss. That was simple. That was a simple vote. Shit.
But you, you using profanity because I didn't support you.
I'm talking to me.
I have a vote.
I'm talking to me.
I'm just saying, Councilman Mays.
We in a recess, ain't we? Ain't we in a recess? So I can say hell? Damn? Want me to say some more? You gone with that. And I still think I can make it to heaven. Because this is hell. This is hell. This is some nasty racist hell, and you rolling right with it. I believe, that's what I believe. This don't make no sense. Every meet, the same two or three. It's, it's obvious. Y'all is raising hell. H-E-double-L, toothpicks. We used to say we was kids. This is hell. Now everybody knew it was an appeal on the flow. What we are standing for? Five or six votes controlled this hell. How can we know what's happening when it's on me? But when it's on foolishness, you don't know what's happening. Oh, I don't know.
Councilman Mays, why is it that you appeal all the time, but your appeal is so respected?
We appealed this one. You didn't know it.
No, how come you didn't say?
Ms. Galloway, how come every time you on they side? How, if you want to ask me a question, why is that? Because you trying to get votes from them? You lobbying. I heard you were trying to be president. That's on the governmental ops. We gonna talk about it. Yeah, so if you can count Eva's vote, Kate Fields. We in here, I'm discussing it. When it's hell, um, there are all health in the break loop. The closer we get to November, the closer I'll be in these wars. I guarantee you. I'm not gonna do this for three, four years. I've been successful before. It's going down. You can't conduct city business in the middle of this mess. Stevie Wonder, Ray Charles knew it was an appeal. And we can't get folks to vote right. Now you ain't gotta vote for me, and I'm here to tell you, just vote for what's right.
Let's say on the record, it sounds like because I didn't support you, you're intimidating.
No, it were both of us made that appeal. When the white folks appealed you, but you vote with him. When the two blacks appealed, you don't know it's that.
And now you're intimidating me.
I ain't intimidating you, I'm just telling you to talk the truth. If you feel intimidated, I can't control that. I can't control how good y'all feel. I can't control that. So you show fear from it. You know, they say they scared. They're staying the night long. Don't come to the first war. Don't make no sense. Every meet. Every meeting, the same folks. Can't read, don't know what they doing. They won an election by default. Eighty-nine votes in your own song. Crazy. Says every meeting. Talking about I'mma ignore the appeal. We moving on.
Regardless of what's happening over, we're gonna be here till midnight.
I don't know what they doing.
Why we in recess? What we doing?
No, they don't know what they doing. Five or six.
I think it's six.
I'll bet it's six too.
Yeah, I think it's six.
When we vote, we move on.
Yeah.
Uh, if we're in agreement, we can just move on.
Yeah, it doesn't matter. Let's move on.
And you just put in your mind who dogged and who didn't know and what, and you move on and you make a record of it.
Okay, we think it's.
Because they don't care. They stupid. So where do it say that? In the rules, Angelo? Twenty-five point five, let's see what it says.
We already did all that.
No, he appeals a appeal.
No, we can move on with the meeting.
When you said that he couldn't appeal, he appealed that you can't, not off his appeal.
What was that focus on? The appeal of?
I don't know, but we can move on with the meeting. It's over.
That would be, that would be really correct, even if it's a. She can't get around that appeal. But that's what she were trying to do and Monica and Griggs and her voted it wasn't no appeal on the flow. And Stevie Wonder, Ray Charles, everybody sitting at this table knew we were in the middle of an appeal, and she talking about it wasn't them.
Yeah.
We moving on. That's the stupidest thing I ever witnessed in my life. And then your councilperson, she don't know what's going on all of a sudden.
So can we start this meeting?
Problem that you're so easy to give advice when it's one of us that breaks something, and then when it's Mr.?
And quit accusing people of being discriminatory and nasty as y'all is. You need to quit that, Eva. Y'all causing problems.
Oh, wow, such a nasty.
Eva, you is a nasty talker to everybody, and I'm getting tired of it. You talking nasty to everybody. The city attorney, me, who give you the right to talk nasty and don't get talked nasty back to your little nasty butt?
We gotta stop with these nasty.
Nah, I won't get nasty. You go low, I'm going lower. Y'all nasty.
No.
And the facts ain't gonna change.
I'm absolutely with you on that.
Oh, you nasty too, Miss Eva.
And you nasty, you nasty all the time.
Don't try to play that game. Y'all nasty.
And you need to stop. With your racial undertones and everything. Just stop.
You think it's funny. I said it's not right.
You better stop pointing at me.
You nasty. Old Jackie Poplar used to do that and she gone. Jackie Poplar used to do that and she gone.
That's a threat and intimidation.
But you guys can't talk to people the way that you talk to them.
Ain't that crazy? They think this is a gang. This ain't no gang. She ain't had no right to attack Angela. She ain't had no right to make light of folk.
Uh, there's a, a motion to adjourn this meeting. Is there a second?
Y'all got a motion, y'all can adjourn. You got a motion on the ordinance, man.
Well, I'mma go get it over. They wanna just dog out this agenda. We got ordinances in business. The thing don't fool.
Just gets dropped to the next meeting.
Don't make no sense.
Okay. Okay, so all those in favor of adjourned this meeting, uh, say aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
Okay, uh, those opposed?
Nay.
Okay, so it passes five to.
I voted no.
All right.
So we in governmental ops, and the ordinances didn't move.
So they still in committee.
And, 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 and the appeal wasn't recognized. She dogged it out. So I'm gonna see if y'all gonna let me dog them out like they dogged out our appeal. This is getting ridiculous.
All right.
There are everybody who roll with that mess and disrespect this entertainment.
Yep. Mr. Winfrey, would you like to?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we move the appointments, both of them, to city council.
There's been a motion, uh, there's a second. Winfrey?
Mr. Chair, I move, uh, second the motion.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah.
Mr. Mays?
This is Martin Banks, the local office's compensation board, and then Kathy R. Jackson to the library board. I'll be voting to move, um, Martin Banks and Kathy Jackson to council, um. It's the Kathy Jackson appointment, it's not a reappointment. Whose place is she taking? Matt Slanker? Um, is Ms. Jackson here? I know who Martin Banks is. I like to see and hear from appointees, um, so I'll be voting to move this to council. Anybody know Mr. Banks? I know Martin Banks. I don't know Ms. Jackson. I'd like to see him, but both council, they might not get here. But that's my position on appointments. At least show up and show yourself to.
No?
Yeah, I said I'll be voting to move it to council.
I'll thank you, Mr. Mays. Is there anybody else that would like to speak on this subject? Here, no further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nays, abstentions. You guys have it now.
Madam Chair, I mean, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Mays?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'm looking at discussion item one eight zero four five three. I would like to discuss that now. Uh, my position is this. The reason, it's on page two. It comes right after appointments on the agenda. Um, the reason I put the Flint City Council leadership as a discussion item, I think it was highlighted today, particularly in the legislative committee. Ms. Worthen refused diligently and was supported by three council members not to recognize an appeal from the ruling of the chair. And I've never seen nothing outrageous such as this. Griggs, Galloway, and Worthen voted contrary to what was in front of our eyes.
Ms. Galloway?
What vote is she talking about?
Uh, all right, Mr. Mays, would you like to answer what we're talking about?
Yeah, I'm talking about the vote that it was no appeal on the flow. It was point of order. Can she keep interrupting me when I'm talking?
Okay, thank you, Ms. Galloway. Mr. Mays, you have the floor.
See, the problem we got, we got double and triple standards. I'm tired of being discriminated against. I'm tired of it. Now I know I can file under the color of the law. I did it and got forty-five hundred dollars in the last session of council vote. But I'm not gonna be discriminated against. It ain't gonna allow Ms. Winfrey Carter and nobody else on this end of the table to be discriminated against. When I started finance chair committee meeting, and I done treated people fairly. Eva Worthen, Kate Fields, Monica and them, they appealed the ruling of the chair, and we go through the process. But now we get the legislative committee where the white female chairs.
Mr. Mays, hold on, Mr. Mays? I would like to ask you to not use race in the discussion. Thank you.
I'm gonna use race. I'm black, she white, I'm male, she female. You cannot discuss race without talking race. So you can politely ask me not to use race, but I can politely tell you I am gonna use race. In America, in the city of Flint, race is relevant. I've seen people vote along racial lines. I've seen cultural differences, and if you look at the agenda, we've asked that, you asked, Mr. Chair, that race be a discussion in governmental ops. So we are in governmental ops. So you hypocritical if you gonna put race discussion on the agenda and then tell me not to use. Um, let me say this, Mr. Galloway, I got the floor. What is your, what is you calling my name when I'm trying to make my point, Mr. Chairman? You keep interrupting me. You put race on the agenda. Now you gonna tell me not to use it. You keep interrupting me. Ms. Galloway interrupted me. I could have been the maybe made my point if you and her would allow me to have a floor. I don't appreciate the different treatment. Now I'm gonna say where I was starting to say, when the white female chair and I appeal, and it's supported and appealed by a black female, Griggs, Galloway, and Worthen vote, it ain't no appeal. In other words.
Point of order, Mr. Chair, Councilman Mays' discussion is not germane to what is being discussed right now.
Mr. Mays, can you keep on so just?
Let me say this. My discussion is germane to the leadership of this council. I'm on one eight zero four five three. If Ms. Galloway ain't smart enough to listen and connect the dots, then that's the problem. Everybody ain't got the same intelligence level. So the leadership of this council and how we gonna function for the next year is relevant and is. and is tied in to votes. People have been voting on this council along racial lines. Whether, when you see Worthing, Kate Fields, and Griggs hang together, them the white folks. And it's clear that they hang together, they vote together. Even in the city of Flint, when you look at the voting patterns in precincts and wards, people vote along racial lines. You put race as a discussion on here. So don't get hypocritical when I tied racial factors in on leadership. There's no way, Mister Gara, that you can put race on here. We discussing leadership, you Hispanic, they white, you vote a certain way, they vote a certain way, and it ain't relevant. It's very relevant. This council had been dominated by white folks for years. Black folks now have five and six votes. And I'm telling you, it's relevant. The mayor is black, look out at that wall, look at all them mayors from the past. White, 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 then you see Sharp, you see Woodrow Stanley, you see Mayor Reese.
Point of order, Mister Chair, I'm going to read rule two nine point six. Any person who will be in heard at a council meeting may be called to order by the president or any council person for failure to be germane, for vulgarity, for personal attack of persons or institutions, or for speaking in excess of a lot of time. Mister Mays is continuing to use race as a way to clement divisiveness on this council and I believe in the city and I believe it is a personal attack because I am white or you are Hispanic, Mister Mays is African-American, is irrelevant to the discussion of leadership. He is trying to make race relevant, it is not relevant and I believe his discussion needs to be stopped because he is using race as personal attack.
I may respond, Miss, uh, Fields, I understand your point, Mister Mays, I think there is a topic on discussion for race, uh, and this can be specifically on leadership, if you wanna wait to the discussion item, which should be further than the agenda, speak specifically about race, that's what I would encourage you to do.
Let me say this, I appreciate your encouragement, but leadership is on the agenda now. And if race is on the agenda later and you put it on there, I can talk about it as I talk about leadership. So I respect what you wanna do, I respect people get a little antsy, but when I read in the paper, black on black crime, there's statistics and data, when I get to civil rights.
Okay, I will read this again, for failure to be germane, okay, we're talking about leadership. Leadership is not to do with race, it's not to do with, uh, partnership.
Mister President, Mister Chairman, point of order.
What is your point?
Can't you see she using these privileged motions to take the floor?
Let me, let me listen to the rest of her point. And then I will rule on that, that please discuss specific leadership skills, not race, and then when we get to the topic of race, if you'd like to discuss racial divides we have in the council, do so then, but try not to miss the deal.
Have you ruled on her point? That's what I'm waiting to hear, is it denied or correct?
It was taken.
What that mean, is it denied or corrected? Because I'm finna continue to talk about leadership. Whether it's a female black, whether it's a female white, whether it's a male black, whether it's a female black, or whether it's a loud talking brown. I'm gonna discuss leadership and leadership, whether it's the mayor's office, has to do with race. People can vote along racial lines. You put race on here, you want me to discuss leadership without discussing gender and/or race and how these certain people been doing, I don't have to do that. You might want that, you might pray for that, you might not want me to say black, white, Hispanic, it ain't illegal. You can't limit my freedom of speech. And so you and her need to cut it out and quit interrupting me and allow me to proceed with this agenda item. Y'all the only ones getting antsy when they say black, white, male, female, what you gonna tell me next, I can't talk gender? I can talk anything I want if it's legal and within the law and you can't limit my freedom of speech under the First Amendment to discuss these things. And you need to cut it out. Now may I proceed uninterrupted?
Mister Galloway?
Uh, Mister Chair, as much as I respect having the ability to speak on this most important issue, we have no time restraints. And so my question becomes, when are we gonna get to the council meeting? And this is going on and on and on and there is, so is there something you're doing that's going to make us be on task?
Point of order, Madam, Mister Chairman, is she using that to get the floor?
I think her point was.
What is it?
Her question was asking if we have any time restraints, which we do.
It's a quick inquiry, it ain't no long inquiry. Point of order, rule on my point.
Point of information, does Councilman Mays remember that he, we recessed?
Point of order, Mister Chairman, point of order. She's abusing that privileged motion to get the floor. She can wait, it don't matter, okay, then we should never hear that it's an abuse of a point of information to get the floor from you.
Mister Mays, you have.
Cause I'll use it.
Mister Mays, you have the floor and as the council rule states, there is no time limit for discussion and I can stop you speaking, so please proceed.
Well, I'm glad, and keep her quiet. I could care less if folks get antsy when you talk race, black, white, young, old, male, female. It's relevant. And I'm not blind. I see when Eva and Kate and Griggs and them vote together. And I know that they, we said in the NAACP, maybe it's a cultural difference. If you don't like to use the word white, maybe it's a cultural difference. And I know they turned off to that and Monica turned off right with her, Ms. Galloway, cause she votes with. So we'll say, maybe it's a cultural difference. Now here, my ward, one of the most dangerous wards, black on black crime, but they come in council meeting constantly for months. We're scared of him, we scared. That's poppycock. They ain't scared, they trying to negatively attack me. White folks. Every time white folks get on there and they're with a flag, they clutch their purse.
Councilman Mays's discussion is not germane to his request to talk about the president or the vice president and next leadership choices.
I will rule that you are correct, Mister Mays, please discuss councilship positions.
Let me say this, Mister, Mister, um, Gara, keep you and her from interrupting me because I started out talking about the vote for leadership. And then once I start talking about the, if the proper word is demographics to makeup of this council, that's when the leadership thing turned into point of information, point of order, you saying, don't discuss race, gender, I guess, and I say, I can discuss that. This council is made up of six males, three females, unless I counted wrong, is made up of five blacks, six blacks, one Hispanic, and three whites. I can talk about the demographics of this makeup, I can talk about the composition of the wards. The first ward is probably ninety-seven percent black. The second ward has got a high black makeup. The fifth and the third, I can talk about that as we move into leadership. And I can talk about a group block of votes that seem to have a cultural difference that happen to be white. Griggs, Eva, and Kate, they just traditionally votes together on appeals and rulings, and Monica vote with them. I can talk about if Monica, in my opinion, see that she wanna move that way for the vote in November, the big question is what you gonna do? See, I support Mister Winfrey. What's wrong with that? We can discuss this, it's better than y'all making phone calls violating the open meetings act. I put this on here, I don't care how Miss Galloway jump. I put this on the agenda because it's the right way to do it. I don't care how it's been done for twenty or thirty years, don't call me talking about vote for me for president and vote for me for vice, don't call you Kate Fields and Eva and then y'all do the round robin and we get in here, ain't no discussion and we know who got four votes. That's why I put this on here and I got the right to put it on there.
I'm gonna ask my colleagues to indulge me here. Now, Ms. Brown has been sitting here and she has some things, and Councilman Mays, you, you're, you're absolutely right that you gave us demographics. Now, I tried to follow you for a while and I didn't understand where, uh, in fact, I don't even see.
This a point of information or you using it to get the floor?
What I'm trying to say is.
That's my point of information. Come on, Mister President, don't do it.
If you gonna let me finish, I will.
It's a quick inquiry, it ain't a long inquiry.
Right guys.
Point of order, point of order, it's a quick inquiry, Mister President, ain't a long inquiry. And let you ask me to deal the floor, I like, but don't abuse the, uh, a point of information.
May I make that?
Mister Winfrey, please make the point.
My, my, my inquiry is, will the council indulge me and, uh, suspend the discussion items adjourned this meeting so that we can get to Ms. Brown's case? Cause she's been sitting here, that's my point of information.
Uh, Mister President and to the council, I didn't put this meeting together for today. And y'all know I'm a stickler for taking care of business in committee meetings, I wouldn't care if every council person walked out, that's their business. But I, when I come to council meetings and I put stuff on the agenda, particularly as we move into November, it's a reason to discuss this. And I wait for the chair, just like Griggs did, cause I mainly talking to him.
I'm listening to you. She's leaving, she's excusing herself from the conversation.
All the ones who ain't voting right can leave, as far as I'm concerned. They don't care about this discussion cause their mind made up, I'm hoping they don't drag you in too. That's why I put it on the agenda. I'm gonna talk openly, honestly, in an open meeting. I don't have to wait till November and people do round robbins, I seen it with Del Rico Lloyd, Birdell Duncan, Scott Kincaid, and others. So I'm doing something different than they did in twenty, thirty years. I put an agenda item to discuss the leadership. And I probably would be done if it wasn't constant interruptions, but you won't know now, cause it's been constant interruptions. I should have a right to speak. And it ain't nothing illegal talking race and gender and the makeup of this council and the pattern I've seen this whole year. And the patterning came from Eva Worthing, Kate Fields, and Mister Griggs, and they just happen to be white. And I'm here to tell you lately, I've noticed Ms. Galloway been chiming in with them, and then a little birdie told me, and she can tell us if it's right or wrong, cause she didn't ask to be recognized next, that she wanna be president. One, two, three, four, team up with them, you to swing both. Because, guess what? I'm gonna be voting for a repeat, Mister Winfrey. In the first round, you wanted to be president based on what you told me, and so the handwriting is on the wall, you can do what you want to, you team up with them four, be president or vice. Or you can stay over here and be vice finance chair governmental office or whatever, but all of these moves that's being made, I done seen them before. And I done seen how, when a person walking the fence like you, they rule on this nonsense about you can't say black, you can't say white, um, it ain't no appeal on the floor, I abstain. Them the traits I see from her. I'm hoping that you say yourself, cause I wouldn't care if you voted Kate Fields president. Once I see the five votes, I got work to do. I got work to do. They call it a threat, call it a promise, I'm not gonna go through what I went through with Jackie Poplar, Carrie Nelson, Vicky Van Duren, replaced with some new names, Eva, Hugh Griggs. We know what's right and what's wrong. Clearly you could see what was wrong today, it wasn't appeal. You voted a certain way, she abstained, she might not don't wanna offend them white folks.
There he is, there he coming up.
Let me say this, that's my view.
Point of order.
Uh, Galloway?
Count Pres- I mean, uh, Mister Chair, it's one thing to talk about race, but there is a, an ideology and the way you form your words that makes it racist. And so all I'm asking is that it would remain germane to the discussion without bringing race like it is.
Point taken, I, I agree, Mister Mays.
You can agree, but y'all can talk the way y'all wanna talk and I'm gonna talk the way I wanna talk. If I wanna say people of white persuasion, if I wanna say cultural difference, or if I wanna say white folks, it ain't illegal. I can say it, so I can say if I notice her pattern of voting with white folks as we go into this, um, thing, I'm watching your pattern. In my mind, her pattern is already locked in my mind. She seem to be lobbying and, and voting with Eva Worthing, Kate Fields, Griggs, and Monica Galloway, that's four. Now, when the roll call start in November, we gonna see if Mays say Winfrey, if he say Winfrey, and so forth and so on, we gonna see what you say. And so that's this discussion item.
Point of information, is Councilman Mays on the record continuing to make threats?
I'm talking about votes, I didn't make no threats, but I'm talking about votes. If a vote threatens you, then you more ignorant than I thought, Miss Galloway.
Hold on, Mister, Mister Mays, can you?
I don't appreciate her implying that I'm threatening.
You are threatening.
So that's, that's.
Mister Mays, what's the Galloway? Mister Galloway, you don't have the floor, Mister Mays, and ask you not to call anybody else's names.
I'm gonna call some names.
It's a warning, don't do anything.
Okay, what's gonna happen if I say a name? Santino Gara, I said your name, I'm gonna say any name I want, I say Jesus Christ, you can't tell me not to say no name. I say your name, Mister Davis name, Ms. Galloway, then you can't tell me not to say no name. What I will do is wrap up this discussion item and ask that it stay on the next agenda. Because y'all are sensitive when we talk black, white, gender, Hispanic, I ain't sensitive about it. She can be mad, cause I'm exposing her record, hell, that's her voting record, it's fair game. Their absence is a fair game. Since November to June, Kate Fields got thirty-five, Monica got thirteen or sixteen, he got zero, I got two, you got four, she got six, we all single digit athletes. Thirty-five, sixteen, fifteen, thirteen, no wonder they don't know what the hell going on, cause they ain't here. And then they wanna be leadership. And then when you talk, they don't want you to appeal, but they wanna appeal, they wanna call you obtuse. Kate Fields called me the most racist person she ever met and y'all didn't say nothing. Galloway didn't say it, you didn't say it, Griggs called me a racist, y'all didn't say nothing. So I ain't said nothing about races, I coined the phrase when they called me a racist, I say, I don't know if y'all racist, but you show Eric's, Eric Maces's, and it went by it. So I don't appreciate Ms. Galloway, I don't appreciate it at all. And I don't appreciate Kate Fields and Eva Worthing. And Mister Chairman, I don't appreciate you, and I'm gonna tell you why. You can't take up for folks, it ain't nothing illegal saying black, white, young, old, ain't nothing saying women, that's what they arguing about at the Supreme Court appointment now. You talk about women, blacks, whites, that's what they doing when they say make America great again, America been great. My position is this, I'm gonna say it, black, white, young, old, male, female, and I'm gonna tell you where I'm headed. I ain't never jumped out this early on this presidency thing, but I put it on here, cause I see what I think y'all doing. Now, if I'm wrong, when November hit, the power and the leadership won't shift to this crazy side with Eva, Kate, and Griggs there. Cause we see what she doing, I do. I'm trying to figure out what you doing. I ask that my discussion item stay on the next governmental office agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mister, we have, uh, Ms. Galloway first and then Mister Winfrey, at least for the residents who are watching, anybody here may know, uh, we're currently on discussion items, there's no time limit on discussion items, that's why council members are allowed to speak as long as they.
Point of order, point of order. Point of order, point of order. Didn't you vote for me not to talk to other people with that crowd? And so, why are you talking to other people and having editorial when you voting with them clowns on what I can do, Mr. Chair?
Mr. Mays, first of all-
Point of order.
What's your point?
Now, do y'all need to appeal to your ruling? Because I think you voted on a council rule, but now you want to talk to the people. So, it's hypocritical. Let's see what you do. I said point of order, you should be calling on her.
Your point is recognized, uh, I did vote no to answer your question on that one. So, uh, Ms. Galloway, the floor is yours.
First of all, I just want to say that, um, it is disappointing that Councilman Mays continues to talk about race and record, um, instead of talking about intimidation tactics, um, and, and talking about, um, fair treatment of people. We do have to be responsible for our voting records, and, and our constituents will hold us accountable for that. But we should still be a council that, um, gets to vote based on the information that they receive and, and their comfort level. And it just doesn't seem like there's that fairness on this council. Um, Councilman Mays can talk about what he wants to, um, as far as race, and we know that our nation is, is highly racially divided, um, but that, that shouldn't be what's going on here. And if Councilman Mays wants leadership change, he has a right to that. But I think in the way that he's going about it, it just, it just seems disappointing. But with that, I make a motion that we adjourn this meeting so that, um, we can pick up where we were on finance and still get out to the council meeting that was supposed to start at five-thirty.
There's been a motion, there's been a motion on the floor to adjourn, is there a second?
A second.
There's been a second to the motion, uh, there's no discussion on this. All in favor to adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
Mays?
Aye.
Abstentions. There is, it passes with a one, two, three, four, five, six, so six to one vote. All right, we're adjourned.
Grant Committee.
Um, I would like to bring Grant's Committee to order.
Madam Chair.
Yes, um-
I make a motion that we postpone discussion items to the next Grant's Committee.
A motion has been made to postpone, um, discussion items to the next Grant's Committee. May I get support on that motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a substitute motion that we postpone this special order and outstanding special item until the next.
You must have a-
Do you have your amendment?
Yeah, there's-
Oh, then I don't have that.
Yeah, there's an amendment.
Okay, all right. No, I don't have that, I'm sorry. Then I withdraw that, and I support his motion.
It has been, uh, moved and supported that we, uh, postpone, um, the Grant's Committee to, um, the discussion items to the next, uh, meeting. Um, any discussion on it?
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'm gonna keep saying that I never would have scheduled all these committee meetings prior to council meetings. That was the first mistake, I hope it never happens again. Had somebody asked me, I would have told them I wanted to be at House of Grant with Gretchen Whitman, your president, and I scheduled it, I hosted in my ward. I wouldn't have never went for it. These meetings would have happened last week. And normally, we get a poll for somebody to check to see if we can meet. So, I'm not gonna vote in favor of postponing business. Y'all know my position, and particularly here and now, particularly after they done pissed me off, and the ones who done pissed me off done left the room. They throw the rock and don't even hide their hand, but they leave regularly. Chalk up another absence for Grant Committee. But I'm gonna predict this motion to postpone and cancel will pass just like they do week after week after week, I'll be voting no.
Any more discussion? All in favor of, um, postponing, um, discussion items to the next Grant's Committee? Um, so, what you, uh, signify by saying, um, aye.
Aye.
All a poll?
Nay.
Okay, and all abstain? Okay, we have, I believe, um, six, um, ayes and one nay.
Uh, let's reconvene finance.
Madam Chair, can you adjourn?
Yes.
I make a motion to adjourn?
It has been, uh, moved and, um, supported that we adjourn, um, Grant's Committee. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All a polls? All abstain?
There are no oppositions.
Okay, so, we would be back to reconvening and coming out of recess on Finance Committee. And so, we out of recess. And I think when we went into recess, we was fixing to hear from Ms. Brown because we under special order as for the investigative hearing. And, um, I'm gonna probably move that we do a paper resolution because since we voted once or even twice legal, and I'm hearing the clerk's office want a paper resolution. Now, I thought it would be to us by now, but it ain't came to us yet. And so, I'm, I've asked for that resolution, I'm gonna continue to ask for it, but I think her information is pertinent as it relates to moving forward. And in the middle of this hearing stuff, the hydrovac gonna come up. Ms. Brown called me this week, and she had some interesting information. Ms. Brown, will you share it with the council? We in a special order, I'm, it's my special order, so fight with me when you don't like the way I do it. Go ahead, Ms. Brown.
I have a contract with the city to do, uh, hydrovac and then to do the respiration for anything that was found that was copper-copper in the respiration portion of it. Uh, as everyone know, the, uh, hydrovacant was suspended, but the, uh, exploration was still done to find out what was there. And at this point, a lot of copper-copper has been found, so we're at the point of doing the respiration for that. Uh, in order to fulfill my contract, I have, uh, for the last month, asked for addresses to the properties that has been found to be copper-copper so that I could do the respiration on it. And I've been told over and over again that they were gonna get to me and give me the information, but I haven't received anything winter is upon us. Um, at this time, the respiration has begun, and I've been given no notice to proceed to work. The respiration as far is for, um, the SLR work. This was supposed to be done at this time, and that's being done by, um, from my understanding, two different contractors, the city and, uh, Goyet was given those contracts to do the SSR, SLR respiration. Uh, in a bi-weekly meeting at, um, for the, uh, contractors. I was told that, uh, Goyet would be doing most of the respiration that has, from the work that's being discovered at this time, which is that in tree upon my portion of the copper-copper that I'm supposed to be doing. So, the contract, I have three different references in my contracts that states that I am, after discovery of copper-copper, that I am to do the respiration for it. And I did bid also on the contract to do the respiration for the SLR, didn't receive the contract, but it states that, uh, respiration for SLR work, not for all the work that's being done. So, I contacted Mr. Mays and asked him, you know, what was, because I haven't received any information from AECom or anyone telling me anything, and every time I call, I don't get any information. So, I called him to see what information he had as far as for what's going on. You know, it's gonna be winter, it's just gonna be put off into next year or what's happening with it.
This, and if you read the language in the contract, Mr. Benzek is here, we'll get AECom up here, uh, final restoration will completed by the con- will be completed by the contractor completing the service line replacement work, which will be part of a separate contract. In other words, what Ms. Brown seems to say to me is that her contract on hydrovac and included restoration, when they look and see it's copper to copper, and at that point, it was hydrovac work, then they would restore. But if a service line was replaced, then it would be restored by another contractor. So, not only have they said cease and desist on a two-million-dollar hydrovac contract, but they also ain't letting her make money on restoration when it was no service lines put, and that's a concern. And so, I'm gonna suggest that, I'm gonna ask Rob that AECom be at the next Finance Committee meeting. I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Janelle that a special order to discuss the restoration, hydrovac, and excavation contracts be on the next, um, council agenda. That would include exploratory excavation. So, all aspects of these contracts, Rob. Service line replacement, restoration, whether it's the city and/or contractors. I don't know what Zito doing right now, I don't know what Goyet is doing right now, but I'm talking to Goyet. I'm talking to Ms. Brown. And I don't like to see Ms. Brown in these contracts treated this way. I'm just gonna be frank with you. You let me get a two-million-dollar award as poor as I am, I'm ready to make some money. I done beat people out, I'm low bid, I done got a award, I wouldn't care if my profit that year is eighty-five thousand and one million, nine hundred thousand, and fifteen. I think that leaves me with eighty-five thousand for profit. I wouldn't care if it was me eighty-five thousand, hers might be three hundred thousand. But whatever she want, we better talk about getting it paid. Because I think maybe we can do it without getting sued. We done voted and signed contracts, now Angela ain't here. But I want to let the legal department know if we have to go in executive closed session with Ms. Brown. I'm willing to do that. If we have to go in executive enclosed session because it could end up litigation, I'm willing to do that. So, I'm speaking in my official capacity as a Finance Committee Chair who can put stuff on the agenda. Between now and the next Finance Committee meeting, somebody from the administration tell me if they want to discuss this and open a closed session, and if you need legal to qualify, because it could turn into some litigation. I'm gonna call on you, Ms. Galloway, and I'm gonna call on you, Rob. But I put this special order here not to let Kate Fields or nobody else distracted, even though she ain't in the room. But this is on here because I think we could have it cleared up if folks didn't start making plans talking about we gonna overthrow the chair and we want somebody else to check. That's what held up the special order and the resolution as I try to pick where people coming from. That's part of my view of why they trying to act like I ain't a fair chair, because we don't want him to chair this historic investigative hearing. Well, hell, I don't want folks to mess it up. That's my concern. I don't want folks to mess it up. A lack of information, ain't studying, missing meetings. I don't want them to mess it up, acting foolish in an open forum. So, my concerns are great. And if it's get too great, Mr. Davis, I wouldn't care if the hearing is held or not. But at, at some point, folks need to just quit. Get your own project to move forward, don't try to stymie and mess up Finance Chair. Um, Ms. Worthen, if you want to be recognized, you would come after Ms. Galloway, but other than that, Ms. Galloway, you had something.
Um, Mr. Mays, yeah, I did have a question, I had a couple of questions. Um, through you to Ms. Brown, was the total of your contract two million dollars?
Two point one.
Two point one. Um, and, and I wanted to do a referral, and I don't know if she can answer now. Um, I too am trying to figure out because nobody wants the city, um, to not fulfill the contract that was approved by this body. Um, there were a couple of questions that I had. When you apply or make a bid, you have to say that you're going to receive a bond for the amount that you bid for. If I'm not mistaken, um, I was told by the Finance Department that your contract was short, well, the dollar amount was smaller because there was not the ability to secure the two point one.
I received the bond in three portions, did you receive the two point one million dollar bond?
Okay, but it was, it was in three portions?
Yes.
Is that what you said? So, they gave you a certain portion-
Yes.
-in phases? So, at this point, they've given you all of your contract, not just portion of it?
No, they haven't given me all the contract, they just, we just started the first phase, and then they suspended.
Okay.
The bond and the contract is two different things.
Well, but they're, they, they, they're not two different things because if I'm not mistaken, we can have finance here, they're not here today. Finance, and, and, and Ms. Brown, through you to Ms. Brown, knows what I'm talking about because she said her bond was broken into four, did you say four, three?
Let me say this though, Ms. Galloway, if it'll help you, and then you continue. When we out, when we put the bids out for twenty-six million, and it was only nine million there, that messed the contractors up. They couldn't bond for twenty-six million dollars worth of work, and in reality, it was only nine million. They had to go back and adjust their bonds, and some of it wasn't their fault. Now, Rob is in the room, and anybody in the room, I think you gonna find out that we had nine million of twenty-six million, that's why we steady taking it. You can't bond wrongfully for something that ain't there.
Councilman Mays, I'm talking about specifically Ms. Brown's bond, I'm not talking about anybody else's bond. You're using words like litigation, there could possibly be a lawsuit, and you are an officer of the city. And so, all I'm saying is, I would like to make sure that we research all of that to find out exactly where the city is, because you're using words that set us up for liability as well.
That's what, Ms. Galloway. Point of, point of order.
No.
Say that, say that, I can call a point of order, I'm calling a point of order. Say that you believe I'm using, don't say what I'm doing, that's a problem.
Point of information.
What's your point?
Do you realize that you talk about us all the time and what we do?
And gonna continue to talk about you especially. So, just say, Ms. Galloway, you believe that I'm doing that, don't say what I'm doing, because you're wrong. Proceed.
Councilman Mays, all I'm saying is, as we make sure that we are doing the right thing by Ms. Brown, I want to know every aspect of it, why only certain portion? Because other contractors' portion of their bid was because the city hadn't secured money. And so, I, I have a right to implement questions that I have as we begin to do what's right by Ms. Brown on the contract. And she said that there was a lot of copper to copper, I think you said. How many copper to copper are you aware of that you believe you should have had by now? If that makes sense? Because you said there's been a lot of-
Ms. Galloway, go through me to her. And the point I'm gonna do, the reason I'm gonna do that is because of this. She can answer you about why she got her bonds and bids and pieces. Well, let me finish, and you gonna proceed, she kinda answered you that. But I also added nothing to do with her bond, I told you of some other bonds that was initially twenty-six million, but when they only had nine million, they could be two separate. It was just some information, and now she can answer and you can proceed.
And I moved on to that, she says she used a lot of money.
She said through her, me to you-
Right.
Answer her on anything that she done talked about.
How much do lead lines are here? Oh, did she-
I think so, go ahead, Ms. Brown.
Okay, uh, at this time, from information that I received, it's probably around four thousand copper-copper.
So, four thousand copper to copper lines-
Yes.
-have been identified. Thus, when did you, when did, when did you, what con- what phase did you bid on, Ms. Brown?
Phase five.
Phase five, this is all phase five.
Okay, so, phase five has identified four thousand copper to copper lines?
Um, we got a printout in our package.
I'm just saying-
We got a printer, only about eight. Ms. Galloway, please, please, can you not talk to Woods and them and keep it here? Then y'all vote against me for that.
I wasn't talking. You know what, Councilman Mays, you can do whatever you want.
God bless you. You leaving?
You are, you in your chairmanship.
I'm used to you. I'mma handle this special order. I'm being polite to you. Quit whining. What's your point? You want the flow? Proceed. What's going on? We helping you.
And then my answer has been answered.
We helping, she said four thousand.
Yeah.
She said four thousand. She heard you.
Your abuse at the chair.
Right now, you abusive.
Chair.
Respect the chair. If you don't, yeah, I'mma abuse you. In your mind.
You, you are-
Okay, then, Rob, you out of order. You out of order. Will you be quiet?
Thank you, thank you, I am.
Uh, one abuse deserve another. Thank you. Now, are you done?
I am done.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Brown, um, I'm, I, I apologize for this. I knew you heard her answer and that's why I cut off. You answered it, maybe about four thousand. We got that printout. It's about eight or nine hundred service lines been changed in phase five. The majority of them have been copper to copper. Ms. Galloway and them, they don't wanna listen. What they wanna do, they wanna just, if they can't get it from this person, they don't want the same information. They come into these meetings wasting time, wanting to showboat. If I can give them the answer, cause it was a printout in our box, they don't want. They wanna hear it from you. So it's right here. So we got it in hard writing, what's what. But rather try to put you on the spot and not let me chair and help on my special order, I ain't got time to hear Worthen. Galloway and them accuse me of being abusive, threatening. They can do that. I let it go in one ear and out the other. We have all the information that they are requesting. What's your point, Ms. Galloway?
Are you aware that I did not have that?
I believe it. That's what I was trying to tell you and interrupt you and try to point it to your attention and you trying to dog me out in my opinion. And I ain't got time for it. So when I chair a meeting and particularly when I put a special order, when I try to help give y'all information, we ain't done. We trying to facilitate a fast meeting and the information that you asked is here in hard copy.
Thank you.
And so over and over, you and Ms. Worthen them jump to conclusions and then y'all take swipes.
Point of information.
What's your point, Ms. Worthen?
Is your point here to try to get us to leave? Could you ask Monica, is she leaving?
I will pray that you leave now. I get your point of information. I'mma continue with this special order so we can adjourn. Ms. Galloway, you out of order. You wanna be recognized or you wanna just play the game like Worthen there? What is you asking to be recognized that you just talking?
Yes, yes.
Well, I ain't finna recognize you right now. Now, this is my position. Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Winfrey, I know you didn't mean no harm when you made the motion to recess. I done asked that this be put as a special order on the next finance committee meeting. Rob? Can you come? Cause Mr. Guerra and you in another meeting and I'm in this meeting. Mr. Mr. Benzick, can you discuss this with her? What's going on with her contract? Do you know? And if you don't know, tell me who should we talk to? AE Con, the mayor, Mr. Gilchrist, lay it out on the line if you choose.
I think I can help you with some of her guy.
Well, let's ha, let's get to it.
So I contacted Ms. Brown, Mrs. Brown, uh, Friday to, to get her started again, uh, working on restoration. I believe she has a lot-
Hold up. Have you ever did any restoration, Ms. Brown?
Yes.
You had did some.
Not, not in this job, no.
Okay, so you didn't call to get her back started again? You would be getting her started for the first time on restoration?
Well, would it be fair to say that she was already working on her contract?
She was working on hydro vac. That would be fair with it. Yeah, but now we talking again. You ain't telling her to start back hydro vacing, is? I'm just working on the again. So go ahead. You calling her for the first time as it relates to restoration?
Part of the hydro vacing would be temporary restoration that she worked on.
Say that again.
Part of the hydro vacing would have been temporary restoration work after she performed hydra.
Okay, I understand that.
She has worked in the capacity of doing some restoration.
I understand that.
There's approximately nine hundred lines, I believe, that were copper to copper identified by Martha Brown, uh, custom builders.
And let me ask you this question. She didn't do the temporary restoration on them, did she? On, on, on the ones that these other contractors been doing, she ain't been doing the temporary restoration, has she? They been doing the temporary, right?
She only did it on her, on the-
That's correct. But her contract say she is to do the restoration on copper to copper. Is that a fair statement?
That's not a fair statement.
Okay, tell us what's fair.
So, so she-
And then, Ms. Brown, you tell us what you think.
Her contract is to do restoration on the lines that, that she identified as copper to copper when she hydrovac.
Okay, Ms. Brown, do you see something in the contract that leads you to believe different?
Okay, my contract was to hydro vac and do restoration on six thousand homes, up to six thousand homes. Through no fault of my own, the hydro vacing was suspended. But they were still excavated and found out that they was copper to copper through a traditional means of excavation. No matter how they was discovered, they still was discovered that they was copper to copper. So therefore, they came under my contract in order to do.
Mister-
Because if in doing so, still under the hydro vac, I still would've, I would've been doing it.
Mr. Benzick, do her contract imply that the replacement of service line would be a separate restoration contract? Have you read that language?
I can't, I didn't tell you that right at the moment.
Okay, well, it clearly says this. Final restoration will be completed by the contractor completing the service line replacement work, which will be part of a separate contract. So you got two separate restoration languages in here. Now, she can't be sat on the sideline, in my opinion, because somebody done breached or stopped hydro vac. And you can't change the written word as far as some type of restoration. You said you called her to get her started again and then I cut you off. With what?
Actually, I think I emailed her.
Okay, well, what did you want her to do?
To get her started on restoration on her co, on the copper to copper lines that they identified when they hydrovac.
And so what is this, the temporary restoration?
This would be the permanent restoration.
And how many permanent restorations are about?
I believe there's nine hundred. I believe she performed about fifteen hundred total hydro vacs and I think about nine hundred.
And is it your belief that any other restoration of copper to copper would go where?
I believe at the moment, Goyette's the only one performing phase five restoration.
Okay, I want Goyette here. I want AE Con. I want Mr. Gilchrist and or the mayor. And we gonna discuss these contracts. So when do you think she should start? Did y'all have to give her the okay or she could've just went and did them on her own? Y'all had ceased and desisted?
On the hydro vacing part of it.
Even on the what took so long to call her for the restoration? Evidently, y'all had ceased. So you saying she just been sitting here and didn't, and she could've been doing restoration permanent?
Well, there was a decision that had to be made.
Okay, well, when was that decision made? Just recently, I would guess.
Absolutely.
So that mean we had her sitting here. So now we wanna get her started. And how much of that two point one million will, do you think that's gonna eat up? You know, Ms. Brown?
Probably about two million.
About two hundred thousand. What you think, Rob?
I, I haven't, I don't know what the number is. I have, I have got the-
Well, we do know that the number for the restoration with Goyette might've went up. We ain't using certain equipment called hydro vac. We might be doing five feet versus two feet. I got a little birdie told me most of the splicing was done on the street side. Is that a fair statement?
It'd be considered a fair statement.
I think it's a fair statement. If it ain't, it's coming from your folks. I go out there. It ain't so much on the grass side. Ms. Brown can hydro vac a whole five or six feet down away from the cutoff. We better discuss this. And y'all might wanna decide if you wanna discuss it in open or closed session. Because we gonna move forward if I got anything to do with it, with an investigative hearing on the floor of this money. We taking in twenty million. And I told Mr. Newsom, I don't mind holding up money to get to the bottom of something. So I think we sitting in the driver's seat right now. I'm a supporter of this administration. I support you. I support the mayor. I support Mr. Gilchrist. I think either he is somebody. And so I support what's going on. And I know that fast start and these replacing the lines is a pilot type program. But you not gonna see me take this special order off this agenda because it's too important. This is a two million dollar contract, Rob. So behind the scenes or on front of the scene? Whoever the decision maker or makers is, I want them in the next finance committee meeting. I want this to be the top special order. The top special order on the agenda. The number one, the three that's on there, they gonna be up under this. And Rob, I'm asking you to relay the word that I wanna try to get to the bottom of this. Now, if y'all done got something together by the time we get back, I'm happy. We ain't gotta waste no time on it. I'll cease a movement, a decision and then made two hundred thousand. How much you think you ate out of that contract before they ceased and desisted?
It was three.
Three hundred. So with two and three, that's five hundred. That's still one point five million maybe hanging out there. And, um, they say what they want. What should I have to say? Minority, company, women, black, minority? Remember, I'm the one that don't want to talk a certain demographic. I'mma talk women, minority, blacks. I'mma talk local. When it come to contracts, I'm talking. I'm an advocate for certain things. And then I'll see what's said. Because I know how to talk. I know how to fight and I know what to shoot for. Rob, whoever the decision maker is, if it's one, two, or three, I want them here. Cause my position is probably the same in this case. And you correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Worthen. I'm an advocate of hydro vac. And I think there's some people on this council who might agree with me. A shovel, a hydro vac, a excavator. The key is the scope of the contract. If you want them to hydro vac two feet out with two holes saved. If you want them to hydro vac two feet out and put a third hole five feet out primarily in the street, you can't hydro vac the street without an excavator, cause you gotta cut. You first gotta cut the cement before you can even use the hydro vac. We ain't hydro vacing asphalt and cement. So them specs, believe me, Rob and Ms. Brown, I know a little more than I'm letting on. And I know I can call and talk to some folks. But I gotta do this first in order to try to get some things moved. Anybody want any more discussion on this? Whether it's counsel, Ms. Brown, or Rob, or anybody? If not, I'mma close this special order. I'mma keep it on here and then the next finance committee is gonna be the first thing. And I'mma see who ain't here. And if folks ain't here, I'mma move forward with a date within three, four days and subpoenas. Now, I've set the date now and hope folks show up or don't show up. But we gonna have to move forward. Ms. Galloway, it ain't been five years since we been out of emergency, man. I heard you on the radio. I been want a investigative hearing for four or five years, you said? Yes, I have.
I said on counsel.
Yeah.
On counsel five years.
Yeah, but, um, now we just getting free. Um, Rob, is it something you want to say?
Yeah, something real brief.
Well, take your time.
No, I just wanted to say that, uh, as soon as we get a pre-construction meeting going and get it scheduled, we'll get you guys to the restoration. Well, that's, that's the plan. Tried to get one today, but, uh, AE Con was the one.
And you have to do it through a pre-construction meeting? You can't meet one-on-one with her and AE Con?
It's usually just me, AE Con, probably, uh, probably her husband.
So that might get a two hundred thousand dollars worth. How you gonna get it to other one point six million?
Well, I think the, I think the key is, is it says up to that amount of contract.
That is key, but we didn't know y'all was gonna cease and desist. If you cease and desist the use of a hydro vac when she done bid it on it and then you say a hydro vac is a health and safety issue and I don't agree that it is. It's just like a shovel or an excavator. If you use it properly, you still gotta address that. When you say up to, I'm saying hydro vac. So somebody gonna have to reach a compromise with me. If I could control five or six boats, it'd be over now. But I only control one. And the one I control say that hydro vacing ain't a health and safety issue. It's a best practice. It's economical and the scope of the contracts was what the problem, what the problem was at. If didn't nobody know it had been splicing and even if you look at it, um, five feet out, how you know they didn't splice at the water main? So you might have to look at the whole pipe. Would that be a fair statement, Rob? You gotta look at the whole pipe. You gotta look at the curb box to see if it was spliced. You gotta look at the water main and the middle.
The only way to be one hundred percent certain is to unearth it.
The whole pipe. Now, what you think you need to unearth the whole thing from the curb box to the house?
The whole thing, from the water main to the house.
So better give her a piece of that, cause we gotta do something. So we gonna give her a piece of something because if a boat come to me and she don't do no work and she come to me for a boat for one point six million, I'm giving it a whole one point six million whether she done lift the frame. That's my vote. Cause I don't give people contracts and then I hinder them and say you ain't making that money when I clearly see it's enough to go around. And I'm a fighter for, I know she sagging of it, I'm a fighter for local, minority, whatever. Why you think I gave Goyette eleven million? So Goyette need to be at the table. You ever heard them say, we gonna work this out? Ms. Brown, we gonna work it out. Give it two weeks. I'd like to work it out. I'mma, you see how I tried to- So that's what we wanna do. I don't think we trying to rock the boat. I think we just trying to fix something. So let's see if we can get all parties to the table and you get with Angela and them and Gil them and see if we wanna do this publicly or in closed session. You can add what you like. That's what this is for.
The, the mayor's whole theme for this project has been local contractors, small businesses, minorities, et cetera. So if you look at all the contractors that we use, uh, the majority of them are, are local businesses or small. Um, in many cases, they're minority. So we're not, we're not trying to overlook that. That's what, that's been the theme of the whole project and that's what we've accomplished for the-
But Rob, you know, we got a letter out there talking about doing stuff a certain way. Two hundred, three hundred dollars a job versus sixteen hundred, you know, all of that we got going on. So we gotta watch this locally. We gotta watch it with small businesses. And then we gotta watch whether or not we gonna be fighting at the end to pay folks a bigger amount versus something that some folks think can be a little amount. That's why we calling the hearing, cause we gotta smooth all that out. We don't wanna wait and get to the end and can't pay enough money. So I hear ya, I hear ya. Ms. Fields?
I'd like to ask Ms. Brown, um, do you do the work yourself or do subcontract?
I do.
Okay, I have a referral, um, for the city attorney. I'd like to know at, at finance, whether we have been following the proper federal procurement rules in requiring our primary contractors to subcontract according to federal procurement rules? and requiring our primary contractors to subcontract according to federal procurement rules with open solicitations, bids, et cetera. And so that would be any subcontractor of any water service issue, including A E Comm., water line replacements, et cetera. And thank you for doing your own work.
Let me say this, this council can create an ordinance and make it a law. From what I understand, that if we wanna create an ordinance that seventy-five percent or some percentage might wanna be self-done versus contracted out, I would say put some of that communication and language on legislative. I've had some conversation with some folks about this type of local law ordinance and language as far as to what percentage could maybe be contracted out. So that would be an exploratory conversation, um, for legislative committee. Um, Ms. Fields?
While we may be able to do that to some degree, when the money is federal money, like the wind money is, we have to follow federal procurement rules. And I'm not quite sure what the state procurement rules are, but I believe they follow the federal procurement rules, especially when they are the fiduciary for federal projects. And I don't know whether we have really been looking at the procurement that is being conducted by subcontractors, but I think we need to check into this, because it could be just like block grant money. If you don't follow the rules under a grant, it can be disallowed, and there would be millions and millions of dollars that have been subcontracted out that could be disallowed, that this city could have no way to pay for those bills.
Uh, Mister Benzick, I'm gonna call on you, but after this, I wanna entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting so we can get on with the business. I'm gonna hear from you, Mister Benzick. But my position is this, when I say we can create an ordinance, I didn't say nothing about federal procurement. It might be something there, and when you hear me say something, that don't mean I'm disagreeing with what you already said, Ms. Fields. I'm just telling you something and suggesting something. Now, if it relates to those federal rules and guidelines, all these referrals that you make, they might not be answered in a timely manner. Google it. You can Google some of that stuff and find out rather than to say I ain't got the information yet. And then, if we vote on the hearing, we can subpoena it. Um, so my position is gonna be a certain position, but Mister Benzick, you wanted to chime in on that, and then I'm gonna try to entertain a motion to adjourn.
I just wanna say regarding the, uh, federal procurement, um, so the federal money is being distributed via the DWRF program. We have worked with the state every, every step of the way to make sure we are in compliance. Uh, we probably are facing the highest, uh, scrutiny of any project. So, I mean, they've been involved with us throughout, and thus far, we have passed the spike. So I just wanna make sure that you know.
So Mister Benzick, you saying that you have been looking and y'all been monitoring the rules?
The, the state of Michigan has, has forced us to do certain things in our, our procurement process and meet those requirements, and we are in compliance to my knowledge with all of them.
And, um, Ms. Brown, um, didn't you say we needed a resolution to proceed with our hearing? Okay, so why, what is the holdup on the resolution? What, 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 what's happening with that?
Well, I think we trying to determine, uh, I think it was, but it's whether or not, uh, it was sponsored by the committee. It was sponsored by the council, and, uh, from the motion, once we did the research, um, we did not say the committee. And all the, all of the, uh, committees that I'm with, the leaders, as I've been here, they've always been sponsored by the council.
Well, let me say this, it's clear that the charters say that we can do it through committees for the council. And whatever been going on in the past, I initiated this one through finance committee meeting. Ms. Fields raised the issue that she didn't want me to chair it in so many words. So now, we voted, and these votes, and it was initiated by me and finance committee meeting. I wouldn't care if it was initiated by Mister Garrett and government or I. We don't have to do that work and initiate stuff, and the charter say it can be committees or regular, and then turn our work over. I like doing my own work. Mister Winfrey, do you have a problem with it being finance committee?
Let the, let the committee council decide.
Well, that's what I'm getting ready to try to do. Mister Garrett, do you have a problem with committees doing hearings?
Just pretend and put a big cardboard.
Are, are you familiar with the language in the charter that say committees can hold hearings?
No, the record's at forty-four.
Well, we better wait and get Miss, um, Wheeler. Miss Wheeler done read it to the record twice. So when you see that it can be committees, then you'll know what the language say, regardless of what's said in the, um, pass about who did what. So it ain't the council, you gonna be a member of the council. You gonna have to decide whether you want this particular hearing to be committee and or regular. And the same way with Mister Winfrey. And then we'll watch and see. I'm trying to keep jurisdiction on it. It's my work. I asked it, and that's what I want. And when I want something, that's what I say, and then we'll see who does what. Ms. Fields?
I need to correct something Mister Benzick said and remind him and remind council that there was four hundred and thirty-three thousand, or maybe four hundred and thirty-four thousand that A E Comm. submitted, um, to the state. They disallowed that cost, and the city had to pay that out of the water fund, and those were through payments that people made, um, you know, paying their water bills. So we're down almost half a million dollars, because they absolutely did not submit the correct documentation. And whatever work they did, they didn't have someone ensuring that the work wasn't done unless it was to be considered eligible. So while maybe they've made some improvements, I do hope, I cross my fingers, but half a million dollars is a pretty good mistake for a city this size.
Mister Benzick, you wanted to respond to that. I seen you stand up.
Well, yeah, the first, I think the, the first thing is, um, I just responded to you asking about procurement, was what you talked about first. So now, we're talking about a whole nother, a whole different issue. So just, I mean, it's a, it's a different issue than what I was trying to say. I just wanted to make sure that that's on the record.
I see your point. Uh, although the procurement issue and whether the services for ARCO, whether they will procure correctly, I will tell you, they are now under question and investigation. So you may not be aware of that. So the procurement and eligible activities, while technically they are different activities, uh, the bottom line is the city of Flint having to pay out of other funds for mistakes that are being made in these water programs, and that's what concerns me. Whether it's through procurement, whether it's through ineligible activities, whatever it's for, okay? I do not want to see big bills laid at the feet of council because these water projects have not been conducted correctly. And I'm not saying it's your fault, okay? We are paying A E Comm. five million dollars to manage these projects. And for that amount of money, I think that A E Comm. should have had somebody on staff that was qualified to figure out whether these consulting contracts with ARCO, the services were considered eligible to the state before we incurred the debt to do so. I just want that on the record.
Okay, um, Rob, I'm gonna say this to the council. That's why I'm voting to bring in the twenty million. The twenty million of state funds don't have all of the red tape that some of the federal and wind funds and others and it give us some wiggle room when we take in state money versus some of the federal money. And so for those who, if you slow up the twenty million, if you don't understand how these monies is operating and how we gotta do to straighten out problems, it's a problem. Mister Benzick, I'm glad that you said you was not responding to that. You only responded to the procurement. I'm ready to set the date. I talked to Mister Newsom, and Mister Newsom said he is ready to cooperate, because it is a trip on some of the flow of money between the state and the city. He told me that today. It's finance there. I'm talking to him. I'm talking to folks. Mister Garrett, I would ask that you probably get with the city attorney, and one of might be here, so I maybe can reserve it until we get out there. But I can assure you a hundred percent, not ninety-nine point nine, this ain't a blood test. I can assure you a hundred percent that the charter that you don't know what it says, I know what it say. We can hold an investigative hearing at any meeting of the council or any meeting or any, um, of its committees. And so if that's something that you don't know, I'm taking you at your words. You don't know it say that, did you?
You know, get with the attorney.
Did you know it say that? It do say that. So it will say that. Mister Winfrey, did you know it said that? Did you know that it say we can hold hearings in front of a meeting of the council or any of its committees?
The, uh, the new charter?
The old one said it too.
No, but I'm, I'm thinking you, you referred to the-
The new and the old. Angela read it the other day. Did you know it said that? Because Mister Garrett say he didn't know. So you know it said.
Yeah.
So we won't rely on yo' yes and my yes. We'll wait till he find out his yes, because I'm not gonna jeopardize a vote, cause he'll say he didn't know in order to try to take something away from me. So Mister Garrett, hopefully you'll find it's true. You can vote the way you want, but I don't do work for folks to take it away on what might can happen. That's what I heard. We don't want him to chair, and it was the same two or three, Ms. Fields. Though we'd already been to hearing. So Ms. Brown say we waiting to set a date, and she didn't say the date. She say we waiting to see what committee is gonna be, or how winners gonna have. I've been knowing what it was. I initiated, got the votes. Now, in the twelve o'clock hour, everything is on hold. That's why it's been on hold, because I've been asking for a resolution to be brought here. When we got staff and folks working, all we should do is ask. At one point, they told me the date would be left blank. So I'm asking, almost demanding for our staff to bring us a resolution. Bring us a resolution, because first I heard it was the paperwork standing in the way. Mister Winfrey, you got objections that it's being done under finance committee?
I don't have any.
You don't?
I just, I-
You got objections? You got objections? So we'll wait to see what Mister Garrett do, because them other four ain't no telling what they'll do. Mister Garrett, when do you think we can wait for you to find out that this is true? It can be a committee here?
Not to speak to the attorney.
Okay, and so, look, we on the agenda. We have one discussion item, a special order. I'll entertain a motion to postpone the other discussion items, Mister Garrett.
Make that motion.
Is it a second? Um, it's been moved and second to postpone the discussion items until the next, what? Finance committee meeting. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I appreciate y'all staying not to break up a quorum. Any new business? If it ain't no new business, then I would entertain a motion from those who stayed. Was that some new business? I'll entertain a motion from those of us who here, but Ms. Brown, you see where we headed on your issue. Um, we'll try to be so diplomatic and smooth. We don't wanna offend folks. We wanna make stuff flow smooth. Let's see what happens. Um, but if folks piss me off, you see how I operate. There you go. Okay, look, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn finance committee meeting. Mister Garrett?
Make that motion.
It's been moved to adjourn finance, Mister Winfrey?
I second the motion.
And it's been seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? What if I said something?
I stand up with this word.
I would say that vote is five to zero to adjourn, no exception.
Hi, my name is, uh, I'm a reporter.
Janelle, this is your book. We'll find out. Thank you so much. I'm the king. I'm telling the king. The king of the block, man. I mean, Janelle Block. Angela. Angela done read that twice. So you honestly ain't heard Angela deal with that twice?
Right, without any of you guys really knowing that at the time. So it's like you're going in there. Exactly, that's what Goyette was telling me. That's what they're- All right, we'll talk about it though. Thank you so much.